All right, at this particular point, the time right now is 5:40 PM. We're going to be doing 2022, 2023 city budget. And our schedule today is from 5:30 PM until we finish. We're going to be doing opening remarks, mayor's office, city council, corporation council budget, treasurer's office budget, comptroller's office budget, human resources, civil service, Act 78 assessor clerk and elections budget. I met with our chief of staff and our interim comptroller David Sabuda. And the way we're going to be doing this is he's going to come in and give us a presentation department by department. Us as council members, we're not going to be interrupting his presentation. We can let him finish his presentation. Once he's done with his presentation, we will go ahead and ask any questions that we have on the council. And then we will go ahead and go to the next budget and then so on and so on and so on. Each director will be there with Mr. Sabuda just in case we have specific questions for the directors directly at that particular point. And then at the end, anybody from the audience or on Zoom may ask whatever particular questions that they have either for the council members or for any particular director or maybe even for the comptroller. If there's something on the agenda that becomes, gets to the point where it needs a much longer discussion, then the plan is we're going to take those particular subjects, we're going to let our clerk's office know, we're going to take those to the reserve date and then go into a much deeper discussion on those. In the event there's something that's, I don't want to use the word controversial, but just needs a little bit more in-depth conversation about. And the reason we do that, so that we don't delay all the different directors of other budgets that are going to be coming up. In addition to that, I've asked Mr. Sabuda to give us a general explanation on each particular budget before he starts on a particular department's budget. General explanation as to, you know, direction they're going in that particular budget, major changes that have happened from the last budget that we had, and then we'll go ahead and do the presentation. Any questions at all? Okay. The only thing I need to clarify, what you feel would be better, is it better to go ahead and go into council questions? I think let's do it department by department.
Yes, sir.
Yes, let's do this department by department.
Yes, sir.
So that's my opening remarks. Mr. Mayor, did you have anything you would like to say? Okay. Mr. Sabuda, who's been doing a great job, by the way, is our interim director, comptroller, and hopefully long-term comptroller. Go ahead.
So ideally, I do want to commend the team, you know, they worked really hard, you know, to put this together, and Mr. Sabuda and all the directors and, you know, Mariana and also Margaret, our HR director. So they worked, it was a great team effort and I do want to commend them. They did an amazing job for the budget. And with Mrs. Sabuda, I know a lot of questions were asked by the council. They wanted to actually handle what's confusing in the past. So we kind of have new council members, we wanted to kind of make it more friendly and be more friendly to the budget. So Sabuda presented, he prepared a presentation actually to show it to you so everybody can understand.
Sure. Oh, you did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sabuda, go ahead.
And first of all, I want to thank the council for allowing us the extra week. It really made a difference. Thank you, thank you very much. It worked out well and it was a true team effort from the mayor on down. Couldn't have done it without everyone's help. Okay, we're going to embark on the 2223 budget. I am here to walk you through the document that has been given to you. There are, and along with me, there are, the department heads will be here as the chair has outlined. You have quite a spending plan here. Dear Board of Hice, does a lot of good things, services the public in a lot of great ways, and this budget supports those services. What I'd like to do first is...
Get up on the screen.
Oh, I will. Okay, I will, I will, thank you. What I'd like to do first is, we threw a lot of information at you. And in the notebook, there are three basic documents that I think are the most important. And the first, by far the most important, is the draft resolution. That draft resolution is what we're going to ask you to pass on May 26th for the upcoming fiscal year. Okay? And I don't want to preempt my presentation, but the council, the city runs on 11 operating budgets. You have the general fund or the corporate fund, but you also have the water sewer fund, eight special revenue funds, and one capital improvement fund, which is the TIF. All of that is here and all of that will drive back into the departments that we are going to be looking at. And you will see line by line the expenses that make up what we're going to ask you to approve on the 21st of May. Okay. With that, if you got a chance to read the proposed comprehensive budget letter that was put out by the team, myself and the team, you'll find a very good summary of what we're about to, we're about to go through. As you go through that, we talk about all the funds, we talk about the revenues and the expenses, personal services, and it's a great overview of what we have. And then, of course, the final piece is the detail, which is the tabs, which show the revenues. And all 11 funds are together on the revenue side. And then on the expense side, we break out the expenses by fund type, which is the general fund or the corporate fund. And then what you have is your special revenue funds, and then the enterprise fund, which is the water sewer. And everything that, everything that we will deal with over the next, what do we have? Eight or four, six study sessions is incorporated in here and again goes back to the resolution. Okay. With that being said, I'm going to start our presentation.
If you could do me a favor, comptroller.
Sure, sir.
On the proposed comprehensive budget for fiscal year 2022, 23, the proposed, the first three, four pages, for those members of the audience that may not have that in front of them, either here or on Zoom, can you give at least a summary of those, maybe at least paragraph by paragraph?
So you're talking about...
I don't want to let out there.
The resolution?
No, no.
Oh, the letter, okay. We're going to go through that. I think I cover that in the, in the presentation.
Perfect.
Okay, and then that way everybody can see it and we'll go through.
Thank you.
Okay, great, great point. Okay, let's get started. All right. As I mentioned earlier, why are we here? State law says that Public Act 2 of 1968 requires appropriation of all operating funds and that all operating funds be balanced. You have 11 of them, again, from the corporate fund, which is the general fund, eight special revenue funds, the TIF, and the water sewer fund. These 11 funds support public safety, cultural, cultural work and cultural programs that are out in the community, sanitation and transportation, and we're proposing a new department information technology. And with those services comes 297 full-time employees, which include 18 new open positions. Okay? And those 18 positions, full-time open positions total $1,055,000. And as we go through the presentation and as we go through...
I guess you wanted to say?
Can you say new positions?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I apologize. I'm sorry. We have, we have 18 full-time open positions. If I use the word new, I apologize. 297 full-time employees, including 18 full-time open positions. Thank you, Mariana. Okay. Any questions here on the first page? Any questions here?
How many question is, will we go break down what the new positions are going to be?
Okay, what, okay, we do not, we have not provided the detail. And councilman, thank you for the question. So what's going to happen here is this, as we progress through the next six meetings, if the council is looking for information, ask us and we will try to bring that back to you the next meeting that we meet or the, as soon as we can within those, that six-meeting timeframe. So councilmember Baydian, I know you asked for some detailed salary information. What we will do is we will bring that back to you, answer your question, yes, we will bring that back to you by department and we will bring it back to you by segment. So as we present the departments, we will bring to you that detail that you're looking for by, by position.
And we'll see past year, present, future, correct?
Are we going to, yes, we'll see that. All right.
Counselor, go ahead.
Just for clarification, those aren't new positions, those are open positions.
Correct, sir. That is correct.
He said new, but it's open.
Open, and Mariana corrected me on that. Yes. Okay. Great question. Excellent. You're welcome. All right. Expenditure highlights across all operating funds. So across all 11 operating funds, okay? These are, in my opinion, the biggest items.
Do we have that?
That should be in your presentation, councilman.
You don't have that.
You should, you should have the, you should have the presentation.
It's on, oh, on this one, yes.
Okay. I know the clerk, she's very good and she's very efficient. Okay. So these are the top nine. Basically, the first one is 2.18 million in capital equipment replacement purchases. This is various equipment in the police department, the fire department, Department of Public Works, the recreation department. This is where you'll be seeing throughout the next six meetings, requests totaling 2.18 million in capital equipment. Built into the budget are agreed upon salary staff increases. So what happens is you have younger employees that are coming through the salary structures based up upon their, based upon their contractual obligation, our contractual obligations. Those increases are built into the, into the various budgets as we go through. As you can see, the open positions, we talked about this earlier, 1.055 million in open positions, that is, they're not new, I apologize. 1.5 million in Gatsby 75 OPEP contributions. This is pre-funding of defined benefit, defined benefit healthcare that we are required to do under Public Act 202 of 2017. We have approximately $5 million worth of debt payment commitments that we must make. That is the first items that we appropriated for when we put the budgets together. 3.3 million in major and local street maintenance expenditures and 3.1 million in to-be-determined road and bridge reconstruction expenditures are part of this upcoming budget. Three, oops, I'm sorry. 3.4 million in rubbish pickup and disposal, not including the debt that is out there, but is part of the 4.97 and number five. And finally, 33.4 million in capital water sewer projects that you'll be seeing as we go through that budget. Okay, moving along to the next slide.
Sorry, Councilor Chair.
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry, just before we move on, I know you just mentioned it's going back to number three.
Yes, sir.
For the open positions. So it does say here it's new as well, so...
It's typo.
Okay.
Scratch that out.
So there's no new IT department, no new IT...
That would be, that would be a new position, the IT would be new, yeah, that would be one, yeah, you're right.
So we do have new ones.
Yeah, so out of, out of all, out of the 18...
So it's only one?
Who's the other one?
Two, ordons.
And ordons, that's correct. Two, that's correct.
Two positions?
Yep, two. Sorry about that. Yep, good question. Two. Good.
Two, before we go to the next...
And it's on, I'm sorry, and it's on the slide.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Thank you, councilman. All right.
Sabuda, two quick questions.
We have 13 open and two new positions.
That's correct.
So what, the one, number two...
I knew you did lie.
The 1.015 million in previously agreed salary staff increases.
Yes, sir.
That's just salaries only, nothing included as far as pensions or...
That is correct. That's right. That is how people, that is how people are moving through.
And then the second question I have for you, can you describe a little bit more the four, number five, the 4.97 million in debt payment commitments?
Yes, sir.
What specifically, that's four?
Okay, well, a lot of them are in the water sewer fund. You have SRF funding, federal clean water debt commitments that are out there, the new, there's a new, there's a, the fire truck that's out there, telephones. As we go through the departments, I will point them out. You have telephone, telephones are out there, they're finishing up. You also, I'm sorry?
The printers.
Yeah, the telephone and the printers. So as we go through, you'll see some, you'll see three of them tonight. You have a sanitation debt that's out there. I'll, I'll point those out to you as we go through.
Okay.
And you'll see those and I'll give you the expiration dates so you can kind of gauge as to when those fall off.
Okay.
Okay. Great. And councilmember Ahmad, thank you very much for that. Yes, we have 18 positions, two new, that's, out of those 18, the two there.
15.
Nope.
Counselor Chair.
Counselor, go ahead.
No, we have 18...
18 positions?
18 positions that are open, two new, 16, okay. There we go. All right, anything else?
Yes, well, I'm sorry, Counselor Chair.
Go ahead.
And if you can just kind of, and will you go over line item number eight? I know that same here that we have rubbish pickup and this whole not included...
The debt.
The debt new?
The debt is in number five. The debt piece is in number five.
Okay.
Okay, so it's part of the 4.97 million in debt.
Now, was this due to like the flooding or...
No, no, the 3.4 is...
Or the breach contract or what they detected that April's word? Is that what it is?
No, 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 that, that is for, for service. That, that is for, so when the residents go out and they put their, their treasures...
Yeah, okay, so this is that...
Right, this is just the service, yes. That's how much you...
For our service.
Yes, sir. You're welcome. Good question. Okay, anything else? Excellent. All right. Revenues by fund type. Okay, so when you look at all 11 funds, okay, this includes the general fund, this includes the water sewer, your capital improvement funds, we're going to be asking you to appropriate 109,648,098 in revenues. Now, when you break that down, the corporate fund or the general fund, 57.5 million, the enterprise fund, which is the water sewer fund, 37.6 million, the TIF, at this time, 2.4 million, and the special revenue funds, all eight of them total 12.0 million dollars in revenues coming in, the various eight funds as they bring that revenue in.
Counselor Chair, go ahead.
Counselor Chair.
Sure.
This has never been presented to us like this before.
Well, that's why I'm taking my time.
And, and this really makes a big difference on knowing because when I saw 109 million dollars, I say, that's never, ever been presented to us.
Okay.
In that fashion.
Okay. And again, and this, you're welcome, and this goes back to Public Act 2. Public Act 2 says you must appropriate for all your operating funds and there, and the state government is looking for that. And this, you're meeting that requirement here.
Citizens have never really known that.
Okay, well, here you go. Okay, councilman.
Counselor Chair, we have found a lot of things that was never reported. Because obviously being on council, there's a lot of things that we wanted to see and Mrs. Sabuda actually came sure and was talking out.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
You've had our conversations.
Yes, yeah.
That's why we did that.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Cassin.
So this 109,000 does not include any of the ARP money, right?
109 million.
It does include the ARP money.
It does.
It does, yes. So that's a great point and I'm glad you brought it up. So what's happening here is we received, actually received the cash in 2021, okay? But what we did is, we have it as a liability on the books and I don't want to get into the accounting, okay? So it's on the balance sheet. We're going to bring it out of the balance sheet, now we're going to bring it in as revenue, okay? And we're going to drop part of it into the general fund and the majority of it into the water sewer fund, okay? And as we go, so what will happen here, and I believe I've got a slide on this a little bit later, there are lost revenues, okay? And those lost revenues, we're picking those up and we're bringing that into the general fund. So we're looking at 2020, 2021, 2022, what were our lost revenues, which is really our, what did we overspend going through the general fund? And we're bringing that money into the, into the general fund. Then the balance, we're putting into the water sewer fund for CSO projects that Mr. Dib has to do to meet Eagles requirements to come into compliance with the Clean Water Act of 1972. So that's, that's in the plan. As we go through the slide presentation, you'll see that. I'm glad you brought it up now, it was a good preempt and I'll make a couple more points in regards to the, to the ARP money.
So as we spoke about, I always like things in layman's terms. Obviously, as councilmembers and you do, we're familiar with the ARP funds, but can you describe to the general audience, whether on Zoom, whatever?
Sure.
Just, just a general one sentence as to what it is.
ARP.
Obviously, it's COVID related.
Okay, ARP is a federal program that, federal dollars that come back to the city and, Mariana, that's my best, do you have a little bit more detail that you can add?
Hello, yes. So these are revenues that are coming from the federal government in order to assist cities with various different projects. The primary area that they're focusing on is water and sewer projects, which is why we're choosing that fund to provide services to. It can also help with some areas of COVID, such as revenue loss, which we're also tackling into. And there's other areas such as broadband and other very restricted areas that we have shared with you when it first came about. We are getting ready to start disbursing those funds on the upcoming fiscal year, so you will hear a lot more about it as we go through them.
But they are restricted, obviously. They're not open to spend on anything you wanted, they're very...
Yeah, you have to provide a report on a quarterly basis on how you're spending that money.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, like this? That works better? Okay. All right. Any other questions on revenues? Excellent questions. All right, let's move along. Expenditures. All right, so across all 11 operating funds, 117,894,168, with 57.1 million being recommended for appropriation or for budget in the general fund, 47.9 million in the water sewer fund, 1.7 million in the capital improvement fund or the TIF, and then in the special revenue funds, all eight of them, 11.0 million dollars across those eight funds, which the majority of those special revenue funds is the major and local street funds.
So the only... Okay. I'm sorry, quick second. So on the enterprise fund, that was a higher amount than the revenue part and it was, it was quite a bit more, it was like about 10 million more.
Yes, sir.
Why is that?
Okay, so basically what is happening here is last year, the council approved and the city sold bonds. So what we're doing is we're putting those bond proceeds into play and we are starting to spend those bond proceeds on various CSO projects, water meter projects and other, and other, other work that Mr. Dib is doing out at the, out of the water sewer fund. So that is your difference, that is the big difference as to why you have more expenses than revenues. So spending bond proceeds.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Good question.
That was the first thing I, I saw my eye. All the rest are below our revenues, but that one was way over.
We only have one other, we only have one other fund that is on, that is a little bit more expense than revenue and that is the drug forfeiture fund. That's the one fund that is spending a little bit more, but that's the purpose of that fund. You want to spend those dollars and get those dollars spent so that it gets back into the, into the departments here at the city.
Counselor Chair.
Counselor, go ahead.
Just another question, I know you said mention something about the proceeds, the money we're investing. So what if we don't get the proceeds we're talking about?
The bond proceeds? Okay, so we've sold those and those, those dollars are on, are in hand. You have them. So no worries there. And you're really prohibited by law to invest those dollars. The federal government frowns on that. They call it arbitrage, all right? So what you do is you, you have the dollars, they're sitting in a regular checking account and earning just the regular rate of interest, which as you know, you look at your, you look at your bank statement, I look at mine, it's pretty low. And at the end of the day, that's what the federal government wants you to do. If you were to invest those dollars aggressively, federal government would frown upon that. I won't get into the big details, but you could lose your, at the end of the day, theoretically, you could lose your nonprofit status and those bonds could become taxable. And you don't want to do that, you've sold those as non-taxable issues. Okay. Good question. All right, moving along. Restricted and unrestricted ending fund balances by fund type. This is where we think we're going to end up at the end of the day, on June 30th, 2023. You can see the general fund, 8.9 million. And I, first of all, before we get into these numbers, I want to stress upon the council, this is not cash. This is not cash. This is the unrestricted and restricted fund balances. So a lot of this is made up of assets, receivables, netted out against payables that we owe, our obligations, and it is not all cash. So I just want to make that very clear here. So at the end of the day, where we are is, the general fund is 8% of the total, 8.9 million, special revenue funds, 12.0 million, capital improvement fund, which is the TIF, 6 million, and the enterprise fund, 88 million. And quite frankly, on that capital improvement fund, you don't want to see a balance there because at the end of the day, remember, the TIF's capturing dollars from us and if they're not spending it, I want it back. Okay? And theoretically, you could ask for that money back in a sharing arrangement. We won't go there today, that's not on the agenda, but it, but they're sitting, they have approximately a $6 million unrestricted estimated fund balance at 630. Okay. Moving along. Oh, okay, now we're going to delve into the two biggest funds. We're going to start with the general fund and we're going to finish with the water sewer fund. I'm going to try to give you a snapshot of what this budget entails. So here, we're showing you that, if you recall from, from the first, one of the first slides, the general fund had 57.569 million in revenue that we were appropriating, recommend for appropriation. And what I want to point your attention to is the gray piece, which is property taxes. 54% of the revenue that comes into the city is property tax. The next biggest piece is state shared revenues, 7.4 million. And this is where, this is based upon population and this is based upon, there are a number of factors. You have your, how much is in the pool as far as your 6% sales tax, that's that money coming back to us here. So when people go to the store and they're buying goods, they're buying goods that are taxed, our share coming back to the local is 7.4 million. This is always a bone of contention with us, with, with the state treasury. I won't get into that today, but at the end of the day, they're allotting to us 7.4 million. That's, that's what, that's the big pieces here. The third piece, reimbursements, that's coming from other funds, the other, the other 10 funds, that 6.4 million is coming back from them.
What were the other funds?
Yeah, what other funds?
Oh, water sewer, the special revenue funds, you have major and local streets, water sewer, the TIF, their contributing money back to the general fund to support operation in the general fund.
From TIF back to the general fund?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, absolutely.
And that's only if the TIF's not being used?
No, 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 including the TIF being used, absolutely. So you have capital projects in there, but also remember, we're providing service for the TIF and they're, they're supporting various programs in there. Good question.
So what's beside TIF?
You have water sewer.
Water sewer.
Okay, the library. Okay, they, those dollars, they'll bring a portion back to us. Off the top of my head, yep, that's the kind of revenues that are coming back.
I appreciate it.
Sure, no, good questions. All right, on the expense side, now this is a busy slide, but I didn't want to leave anybody out. So what I do want to, what I do want to touch...
I'm sorry.
No, that's all right.
Just before you move on to the next slide, I know the federal state grants us 5%.
Yes.
Is that 100% accurate or this is, will change? Because it's their grants, you might get them, you might not.
Correct. This is what we're appropriating for the upcoming year. This is what we think we're going to be able to get this year, okay? So if everything goes perfectly, yes, we think we're going to get 3.1, 3.168 million point one six eight million, or at least book a receivable and record the revenue for, for the activity that has occurred, will at least have spent that money, and then we've got an IOU from the federal government.
Do you think this is a safe number, five percent?
Absolutely, very conservative. You're welcome. Okay. Okay, we go to expenditures, you can see all the details here, but in the, in the southwest part of the, of the pie graph, you can see where most of the resources go. Forty-six percent of revenues head to the fire department and the police department. All right, those, those are the big numbers, that's what's happening here. Your third largest is the gray box to the east of the, of the pie chart, and five point one million in retiree life and health benefits. So those are the defined benefit, fringe benefits that retirees receive that we've promised to them through the labor negotiation.
This is for all employees?
Yes, sir. That is correct. That's both, yes, go ahead.
We're, we're looking at fire and police at roughly almost twenty-seven million dollars out of the thirty million dollars we get from...
Property tax.
Property tax. That leaves us only three million dollars left.
Right, of property tax. Now, remember...
Yeah, just property tax.
Just, yes.
That's a lot of money.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, okay. Good questions, good points. Anything else here? Okay? No, you sure? Okay, very good, Councilman. All right, unrestricted fund balances, two thousand and nineteen through six thirty twenty-three. Very important slide. This measures fiscal health, okay? The state of Michigan Department of Treasury, this is one of the first indicators as to fiscal health for a community. Now, six thirty nineteen and six thirty twenty, you can see the four point eight and the five point zero numbers, those are audited numbers, the five point nine seven two million for twenty-one, that is also an audited number. Those numbers are good, okay? And as you can see, revenues have exceeded expenses, and we have fund balance of four point eight, five point zero, five point nine. Now, what I want to point out to you is this, in the red, the two million dollars, to reach five point nine, in two thousand and twenty, council said that there was two million dollars of assigned fund balance that they unrestricted, and it went into the unrestricted column or the unrestricted fund balance of the general fund. And that pushed fund balance from three point nine to five point nine million dollars. One-time money. One time, very important here. So now, at six thirty at twenty-two, as I projected and talked and looked at our fiscal picture, I'm estimating four point one nine zero million.
The two million was just, was a one-time?
One-time. It was for, council made the decision, and great, it was a nice move. Now, what's happening here is we're projecting that we're going to end up at four point one nine zero million at the end of this year. If the two million did not come in, you see the dotted line there? We'd be at two point one. Okay? One-time money, we'd have been at two point one. So we're thinking four point one nine zero million.
I'm sorry, two point one or two...
Yeah, that's approximately, two point one million, Councilman. Now, as we look at this budget, and we're looking forward, okay? I think unrestricted fund balance is going to end up in the four point three, four point four neighborhood up at the top there. And we, and council, council member Constan brought it up, the two point one five seven million, that's the ARPA money that is in this upcoming budget, okay? That's coming to the general fund that is allowable to cover our lost revenues, that is coming into, into the general fund. Again...
How much is, how many you said? Two point one five seven?
Two point one five seven.
Out of the twelve million?
Out of the twelve, into the general fund. That again, is one-time money.
So what are we going to do in two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five, and so on, and so on, and so on?
We'll get there, okay? Those are challenges council's going to have to work through as we go through this budget and as you go through the budget process into the future. Because as you see, if you didn't have the two million and you didn't have the two point one million, you see that line at the bottom, the dotted white line at the bottom? You'd be around a hundred, a hundred thousand bucks in fund balance. So as you can see, spending is outpacing revenues year in, year out here, okay? And yes, we have to deal, as we go through life, we've got to, we've got to bring that down. We've got to balance, we've got to find that balance as we work through our fiscal issues. But very, very, very strong here, the one-time dollars here. Any other questions here on this chart? Very big. Overtime. Okay. As I look through the budget on overtime, and as we talked about the open and new positions that we have out there. As you can see at six thirty twenty-two, and first of all, before we get started, there is a typo on this, and I'm embarrassed, but there is a typo on this. So I will point out that the building, before we get started on this slide, the building and engineering department, the two hundred and twenty thousand eight sixty-seven, that is incorrect. That is fifteen thousand, not two hundred and twenty eight sixty-seven. I picked up the wrong number when I put the chart together, and I...
Fifteen thousand even?
Pardon me?
Fifteen thousand even?
Approximately fifteen, yeah. It's very small.
Where is it again? I'm sorry.
The building and engineering section.
Not two twenty eight sixty-seven, it's fifteen thousand.
That is correct. Thank, yes. That is, that is my error, I apologize. And it's not two point nine, it would be two point seven two two million at the top there. But...
What is it?
Two point seven two two three nine seven, as you back away the two hundred and twenty thousand.
Wait, wait, can you repeat that again?
Two million, seven two two, three nine seven. And I apologize for any inconvenience.
Where's that?
Right here, right here. You take, and that becomes...
There you go. Thank you, Councilman. Yes, sir.
So David, I had some concerns when I looked over this particular graph. When I counted the top three, which is water and sewer overtime, fire overtime, and police overtime, and I know we're understaffed in all three departments, but at the same time, you're talking about two point one million in overtime, that's a lot of money.
Yes, sir.
In overtime. So, and I know this question wouldn't need to you directly, but this is probably more to the administration and maybe to the specific departments in there. Some obviously has got to be done, because that's a lot of money. Two point one million overtime in one year is absolutely just...
Right.
Mind-boggling.
Right, and this, this, this affects the last slide, no doubt about it. This affects the last slide, and this does not include, on top of, on top of this, you have the fringe cost of pension, which is fifty-two percent of this tack on top for, for pension contribution. So...
We're looking at over three, three and a quarter, three and a half million.
Now, that fifty-two percent is police and fire, it is not the water sewer piece, but the police and fire, fifty-two percent more that we've agreed to, that we need to come up with. So with that being said, the way we were going after this, as we go through the budgets, and as you see the individual budgets, what's going to happen here is if we fill the open positions, this number will come down, and the budget is, is set up to fill the positions, and the numbers are much lower. So what we did for police, we, we were asking for six hundred and fifty thousand in overtime, which is the same amount as last year. In fire, we're asking for four hundred, which is the same amount as last year. And in water, we're asking for a hundred and ninety-four thousand, which is the same amount as last year.
But these would still be high amounts, though.
So at the end of the day, there's some things that you can and can't control, okay? And yes, you rely on your department heads to manage their departments, that's what you pay them for, in, in order to keep this number as low as possible. So as we work through the budgets and as we get to the departments, I will point this out to you, as we work through, you'll see a lot lower numbers, we're requesting for appropriation, but it's incumbent upon filling those, those open positions.
How, how does now, I know police and fire won't be counted in this day, but water and sewer, how does four-day work week affect that overtime now? It's got to affect it quite a bit.
Well, at the end of the day, yes, that, that is part of it. You also have a lot of water main breaks, it snows a lot, you've got to plow the roads, a lot of that happens. So, so you, you know, the weather, mother nature is going to dictate OT in certain instances.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, is you bring people in on a Friday, and half the day Friday is straight down, but the rest of the day is overtime.
Right.
Okay, so most of, most of it could be on Saturday, Sunday, sometimes during the holiday, water main breaks, when they break...
Correct. Yeah, I understand.
One of the things, so I'm here on Gua Har Dua, and also part of the DWW, and the numbers of water mains, like us, actually the cities that is ours, and that's some of the stuff that we're monitoring. So to go back to some of the questions that you mentioned on overtime, we, we right now, we are, every director, we had a meeting, we specifically said every overtime has to be monitored very closely and have to be justified why they did the overtime, why they couldn't have done the work at regular working hours. So every director is watching through overtime right now, and we're starting to see, since we had the meeting, we're starting to see the numbers come down in overtime. So we are closely watching those numbers, and we anticipate next, the next year, those numbers will be significantly reduced.
Thank you.
Also, Chair, you mentioned that when they plow the streets, it comes out of the water and sewer funds?
Well, if they have water main breaks, that drives, that will drive the, they have water main breaks, that will, that will drive overtime. If you look at the DPW, the two hundred and seven thousand dollars, okay? That will, that overtime is due to, to the weather, you know, they're plowing streets, they're salting streets, yeah.
So it's a different fund, though, the DPW fund?
Nope.
I think, well, Mr. Subodh, he's, he's talking about, you know, the different examples for other, you know, overtime, so he combined it, but no, water main breaks goes to the water, no problem, does not go to the water.
DPW. Yes. Yes. Yes, yes, thank you, Mayor.
I understand what he was asking.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Yep, good question. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, can we ask the mayor a question? So for the overtime for the police is nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, and we, how many were short? Six officers?
Seven.
Seven? So if we, if we hired seven officers, this is, do we still have, be it overtime, or?
Yeah, we still have to have the overtime, because we have dispatch, you know, we have, there's, there's a lot of, you know, and some of these numbers came from the COVID, you know, we had a lot of, you know, issues with, you know, people getting COVID, they're out, so you start to bring in more people then. So COVID really affected us, it really took a hit on us, both the fire and police with the COVID being on.
Yep.
So again, you know, we are monitoring this overtime, and both police, fire chief, and also all the other directors, they're watching overtime, and they're, they have to justify all their numbers. So we are closely monitoring those.
And again, if you fill the positions, we think these numbers are going to come down, come down significantly, and you'll see that in the, in the proposed budgets as we go through. Okay, great, great conversation. Okay, now we're going to talk about water sewer. We talked a little bit about this earlier. Estimated expenditures, forty-seven point nine seven five million, thirty million, thirty point three million in bond projects, there's a street sweeper there for two hundred and ninety-seven thousand. Wholesale water costs for GLEWA, four point one five zero million, that's what it costs to buy water from GLEWA, that's what we're projecting. And it costs more to flush. So as you can see, seven and a half million dollars, and this goes back to the Clean Water Act of nineteen seventy-two, the Federal Clean Water Act. So that's what we're, we're staying in compliance with that federal law. We do not want to get hauled back into court, into federal court. And when you, sewer costs the money. So it's seven and a half million dollars. Between the time we published the budget that we brought out to you and today, DUW has come out with an increase, a higher increase than anticipated, so we're going to ask you to raise that seven and a half million dollars, another three hundred thousand. They jumped it from four percent to eight point three percent. So it's an extra three hundred thousand dollars to, to the ratepayers of Dearborn Heights. So when we get to that budget, I will point that out to you. This is where we need the extra three hundred thousand in order to cover that cost. As a matter of fact, Mr. Dib is going to the technical committee meeting Tuesday?
Committee this, this, this Thursday.
This Thursday, okay, Tuesday, that's right. So this Thursday, and they're going to, they're going to put the finishing touches on that, on that charge. Any questions here? Okay, the good news is, we have the funds to pay. Water sewer highlights, okay, we have estimated revenues of thirty-seven point six six eight million. Now, this is different than your package. I changed this slide, so if you would, please, let's stay here on, on the screen. The estimated revenue's thirty-seven point six six eight million. Twenty-six point two million are appropriated for charges for, for services, or sixty-nine percent of the total revenue that we're going to need for the upcoming year. Here is the ten million in ARPA dollars, American Relief Plan Act, the transfer in from the general fund, the ten million. And then we also have one point one two five million in FEMA grant reimbursement, okay? So the big components on the revenue side for water sewer, okay, is charges for services, that's your water bill. That's what we're looking at here. The American Relief Plan, ten million, and that's coming from the general fund, those are dollars in hand, and then the FEMA grant reimbursement, one point one two five million. And, and that's the revenue side for water sewer. Now, what I'd like to do is delve in a little bit further. The estimated charges for... Oh, oh, sorry, okay? Any questions here? I will make sure that you guys get this new slide, I will make sure we forward this to you, okay, so that you don't have to, I'll get this to you on Thursday. You're welcome, sorry about this.
So what was the FEMA grant reimbursement?
The FEMA grant reimbursement.
That's from the Congresswoman, or this is different?
No, go ahead.
This is the money, so you know, we apply for FEMA grants to these homes that would pay a certain...
The demo?
Where they pay seventy-five percent of the price...
Thank you.
To demolish the homes.
Thank you, Mayor, that's good. Good question, Councilman. Okay. Anything else here on, on this, on this slide? Okay, moving along?
Okay.
Nope, we'll go to the last slide, we've got one more to go.
Well, the last one, I have here says thank you.
Yeah, we don't have whatever you have.
This one you do, this one you do have, this one you do. I pushed this one to the end.
Well, this was the original last one.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. I slid that one in. Okay, now, the twenty-six point two, what I want to point out to you is this, following the one ten twenty-two council study that was approved back in March, the twenty-six point two does include a rate increase effective twelve one of twenty-two. Okay, so that's there, that is appropriated, all right? So that's part of the numbers that you've seen all along. I don't want to hide this, I want to make sure that it's out there. You can see the water and the sewer rate increase, this is what's been proposed in the January study, the January twenty-two study that was approved in March. This is the next year going, going through.
But just to clarify to the residents, this increase was only due to the increases that came to us as a city, and therefore, unfortunately, we had to pass it on.
You are absolutely correct.
I don't make it, give the impression that we just raised the rate.
No, 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 no. As, as, if you come back to this, oh, if you come back to this slide here, as you can see on the last bullet point, they're asking for three hundred thousand dollars more than we had even anticipated, and we got to cover that cost. That's just...
Now, that's per, they, they charge that per community, or some communities are more or less?
This is, it's all based upon, this is DUW, so this is based upon our, our CFS, our capacity in the...
Yeah, so ours is different than somebody else's.
Absolutely, sir, absolutely, yes.
Go back to the other slide.
Okay, you want to come back to refs? Right here? And this is where we are here, okay? And you do have this one, okay? And that's where we are there.
I'm sorry, but we have a different number for the revenue, thirty-seven million.
Okay, so what it is, is this, good point, you see, okay, so if I come back to the prior slide that you don't have, thirty-seven, six, six, eight, you'll see the next line, charges for services above my shoulder here, that twenty-six point two carries to this slide, twenty-six point two. So we're, we're taking that, we're taking that piece out of that first slide, sliding it into the second slide, and giving you that detail.
No, I just want to add something, Counselor Chair. I know when we said that these, our water rates were going to go up, you know, six point seven, I believe you said it was only like four, five extra bucks a month, is that correct?
I think that's what it came out.
Yes.
Okay, that's it, both were just a question. So I know a lot of people see six, seven percent of increase in water rate, keep in mind, it's only four or five dollars, it could be ten dollars, it's the highest. I don't anticipate, I don't think you anticipate seeing ten dollars, do you?
No. The other issue is, remember, you control opening and closing, your spigot, okay? And that's another big piece of this.
I shower three times a day, I'm not going to lie. My wife, she pays a contest in the water bill, I got the rest.
There you go, okay, very good.
I'm sorry, the way, the way we look at it here is seven point two percent for the water and six point four percent for the sewer, do we add those together?
You average them for six point seven six percent.
Are you averaging them?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yep, good point. Good catch. Yep. You're going to average those two together and you're looking at 6.7.
Because if you add them, we're looking almost 14%.
No, no. You're going to average those two together.
Thank you.
Yep, yep.
I saw, but I saw for the 6.7 was just average up to 2.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That concludes the presentation. Now, Mr. Chair, before you go, now, as we progress, okay, we will not be doing any more of the revenue side detail. Okay, so you'll notice in your book now. When you look at the book and you'll see the tabs, okay? And the first tab is revenue. We covered the two major funds where the majority of the dollars are coming from, water and sewer and general fund. So as we go through now, we're going to really now focus on the expenditure side of the operation and where those dollars are going. So if you have specific questions regarding revenues, please feel free to forward those and we'll get to your answers and we'll cover those in the future sessions. But we're really going to now focus on expense. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
So two questions. Is this going to be available to residents online?
This is...you're talking about the presentation? We can put that online for you. Yes, sir, absolutely.
If you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
And the second thing is for transparency and accessibility to the residents. What I'm going to do now is, because we just did this, I'm going to go ahead and allow residents to get up or on Zoom to ask any questions. As long as it doesn't take too long, then we'll continue on with the departments after that. So anybody in the residence has...
Who's that?
Yeah, we're just going to give two minutes each.
Can I ask a couple of questions before we do that?
Okay, go ahead.
I know I had a couple of questions.
Well, don't go into the specific budgets, just on this for right now.
Just at the presentation?
Just on the presentation. So any residents have any questions or comments on the budget or on the presentation? Two minutes, please.
Hello, Rachel Lapointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. I just have a quick question on revenues. Last year, if my math is correct, we're 3 million short on our estimated revenues based on projected activity, comparing our amended budget from last year to the projected activity for this year. We're 5% short on our estimated revenues.
I'd have to see what you're looking at. I don't know. I'm not going to go there. The numbers aren't the numbers that we've presented.
Right. My question is, is a 5% shortage on estimated revenues within the normal margin of error?
I would dispute the 5%. I don't know where you're coming up with 5%. So I don't want to answer that question unless I...
So, okay.
I'd be happy to take time with you later.
Can I rephrase then to say, what is the normal margin of error on estimated revenues?
It varies by community. So basically what happens here is it all comes down to city operation. There is no...to answer your question, there is no norm.
There's no accounting norm?
Well, there's no...
Is my question?
There is no norm. Every municipality is different. Every community does things a little bit differently.
Right.
Some communities have good years. Some communities have bad years. Some communities take hits fiscally larger depending on what type of community. So for instance, Dearborn Heights is classified as a bedroom community. Not a lot of industry, not a lot of commercial. However, if you have a Ford plant in your neighborhood, down the street in Wayne, you lose the Ford plant, they're in trouble. And you'll see the swings. That's the best example I can give you. Somebody loses a manufacturing facility. They lose a chemical facility where I live.
So what I'm hearing is you're saying that the margin of error doesn't matter on a year-to-year basis but on a long-term basis?
That's correct. Yeah, both. You know, at the end of the day, you have to tackle your fiscal issues annually. You can't...you don't...as a finance director or as a controller, you do not want to kick...you try not to kick the can down the road.
Right.
You want to deal with it as soon as possible, as soon as you know it.
So that it doesn't get bigger?
That's correct. And state law requires you to bring those issues to light and to deal with them as quickly and as efficiently as possible.
Okay, thank you.
It's a good question.
Thanks.
Zuhair Alha, 354 Rosemary. I have some questions about the pension, Act 345. I see around 10 million and some dollars for pension. Do you know how much the pension has in percentage in finance? How much we have in it?
Mr. Sheriff, go on.
Mr. Alha, I know you asked for an extra minute.
I did call you in...
I know, but you're talking about this time, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you're asking...so he's asking what percent of funding each of the funds have?
Yes.
Okay, approximately the public safety pension system at 6/30 of '21 was approximately 96% funded?
96%.
Approximately. The general city piece isn't as well-funded? Oh, there we go. General government, 87.4.
Okay, it's less than the police and fire.
A little bit, yes.
What's required by state law?
There is no...there's...oh, wait a minute. Let me take that back. 70%.
70 or 60%?
70 or...it's one of those two. You're right in the zone.
It's 60%.
Okay.
So we do fund that particular pension very high. As of 6/30 last year, I believe by 6/30 this year, they will have probably, if I'm not mistaken, more than 100% funded.
Well, we'll wait till the numbers come in. They had a good year this year?
It is a good year. Last year...
Last year was a good year.
Yes, and this year they are doing very well.
And this year they're not doing as well. The market isn't there.
Well, we'll see.
And we'll see.
If we follow the state law, 60% required to fund that particular pension. And we are tagging 10 million and some dollars for them. I think it is time for the city council to give a break to the residents of 10 million dollars and really lessen that number at least by half because they have enough money. They're doing extremely well. And there is no need or any other obligation by law, state law, to give them that kind of money. And we burden the taxpayers by that amount, especially with the economy as it is going and lots of people are suffering from COVID and lots of people are on restricted or social security. You know, so I would ask this council, please, to think about it. Our taxpayers deserve a break. That's about the pension. And I don't see any reason why we have to put the 10,000...10 million dollars.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Go ahead.
Okay, first of all, there are multiple components to the Public Act 345 levy. Okay, there are four components. The first one is the employer contribution for health care. The second one is the defined benefit health care for retirees. The third one is the pre-funding of the OPAB liability. And the fourth piece is the operating expenses of the public safety pension system. Okay, all those expenses have to be covered. The second issue is 60% is a guideline from the state of Michigan under Public Act 202 of 2017. Please remember, the state constitution requires that this benefit be...that if this benefit is there, that it be funded. So you have obligations here, okay? And remember, the market goes up, the market goes down. Experience is good, experience is bad. And what I mean by experiences, you have people that are coming onto the system and you have people who are leaving the system. Okay, so all that is factored in. And quite frankly, at the end of the day, you want to make sure you've got your obligations covered. Okay, and we're recommending that you fund fully what the cost is for employer contribution, the retiree health care, the pay-go piece, the unfunded pre-funding of the unfunded obligation for the health care for retirees and the operations of the system. Thank you.
So to our comptroller, so our projected is going to be 11,852,000 dollars roughly. So all four of those components add up to 11 million dollars.
That is correct.
So there's not taking one off and...
That is correct.
And saving some money one way or the other?
Correct. We are obligated. We are obligated to make those payments.
Mr. David, all this money, you said the four components. Who's in control of it? How much we give the pension out of this 11 million dollars? And how much we keep with the city to fund the health insurance for the police and fire?
If I understand...Mr. Chair, if I understand your question correctly...
We give around 4 million dollars for health insurance. Then we give around 1.062 million for OPB, the trust fund 202.
Right.
If I'm not mistaken.
The retiree health care is...
The 115.
The retiree health care is 5.1. 5.1 million.
1.5 for both, general and police.
No, the police is 5. We're anticipating a 5.1 million dollar retiree health care bill next year for just police and fire.
Do we give all this money to the pension board or we keep it?
Parts...the employer pension contribution will go to the board. The operation piece will go to the board. And the health care stays in the general fund to cover that expense.
What is the percentage of the approximately the cost of police and fire from the general budget of the city? How much approximately we allocate percentage was?
I'm sorry?
Was it 47?
It's here. No, no. Let me...
That include pension, include health care, include salaries?
Okay, so what you have there is this. If you can...if you look there on the right, the retiree life and health, 5.160 million dollars. That's...the big piece of that is there. You'll see in the upper left-hand corner, another 2.468 million in pension. That's for the general city piece. And remember, part of this is in water sewer too. And some of this is spread that way. So you're not getting the full picture here. You're getting the general obligation. So the big piece here is the retiree health and life, which is going to be...let's see if I can...this gray slice here.
Is it over 70% of the budget?
I don't...no, it's out of the general fund budget?
Yes.
It's 9%.
The cost of police and fire pension, health, and every benefit they get.
In total, it'd be 11.5 million dollars is what the estimated levy would be. That's what we're looking at.
Including salaries and everything?
No, 11.5 million is the Public Act 345. That's the estimated Public Act 345.
I'm asking, what is the percentage of the cost of two departments in the city compared to our revenue or our budget? We have a budget of 57 million.
Yeah, so...
How much the police and fire cost in the taxpayers? Just those two departments?
I think council member Muscat brought it up very clearly. You're looking at in expenditures, 46% of the general fund budget is public safety. 46% of the general fund budget is public safety.
That's including pension and everything?
Yes. Yes. In the 46%, we've spread the pension to those two departments, what is applicable to them. So when you look at that 15 million and that 11.5 million, that includes the five...we're estimating close to 6 million dollars in employer pension contribution for '23. And that's built in. I understand your question.
I see you took 2.5 million dollars from the ARPA. Why did you take money as the budget and deficit of that number?
The 2.1 million dollars covers revenue losses that the general fund has experienced over multiple fiscal years. And we are following federal rules. And the 2.1 was what we needed to cover those losses from prior year.
You put them in restricted fund in water and sewers?
No, it's not a restricted...basically what we did is this. Is we had approximately 12.1 million. And we put 2.1 million into the general fund to cover our losses. And then the 10 million, we moved over to the water sewer fund.
Did you move from the water and sewer 2.2 million to the general fund?
No, no. All the revenues were on the balance sheet of the general fund. They came in last year. They were in an unearned revenue account. And from the unearned revenue account, we recognized the revenues in the general fund and then in the water sewer fund.
And your best estimate is this budget basically very conservative or it is not?
This is a conservative budget. We are paying our bills. Nothing more, nothing less. And we're replacing worn equipment. And we're trying to provide solid city service. That's what this budget provides.
Mr. Alha, I'm sorry, I've gone way past the time, so I apologize.
I have the questions. You know, I can come back again if you want.
You can come back later, the next second. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Good questions. Excellent. You're welcome.
Anybody else want to...
Drapkowski, Columbia Street. You mentioned lost funds or lost revenues?
Yes, sir.
Can you give me a better explanation of that?
Sure. In prior fiscal year, expenses exceeded revenue. So when you look at general fund, each year, we overspent our checkbook, okay? Revenues coming in versus expenses going out. So the good news is we had a balance in our checkbook. Okay, so we're trying to recoup that with these ARPA funds.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Anybody else in the audience? Is there none? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, it's on. This is the public comment section. So I'm going to let you on, but we'll give you a minute, minute and a half. That's it. Go ahead and unmute.
Thank you for your generosity, Chair. Just responding to a question, trying to explain that to the council to the public. The revenue estimation is an estimation by definition. Every month, the city council should receive one report from the treasurer and one report from the comptroller office indicating how much revenue and how much expenditures so far up to every month. There is on that, the revenue is short. The council can take with the mayor necessary actions to reduce and amend the budget to make sure they stay above water. Have a great day.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jamal. Anybody else on Zoom? Okay, here we go. We'll go ahead and go into the next section. That's the mayor's office budget.
Okay.
Mayor's office budget, for those looking online. Page 28.
Yep, yep, yep. Yeah, that's mine, yes. Okay, Mr. Sheriff, I may?
Go ahead.
Okay, yes. If you turn to page 28, you'll find the mayor's operating, proposed operating budget. Before we start on it, I have a handout I'd like to give to the council. What I handed out to the council, the mayor has a copy and so does the chair, it's just a definition of key terms. And hopefully this helps you as we read through the budget expense report on page 28. I want to walk across the columns at the top and just give a brief description of what each column means.
I love this. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir. You're welcome. And if there's anything else, please don't hesitate to ask. It's our job to give it to you. Or please stop us if there's something out there because I'm going through and trying to cover the material. And if there's something there, please ask.
So if I could interrupt you for a second?
Sure, sir.
So I asked the comptroller to put this together and he obliged, and I thank him very much. What I'm trying to do, and I want to point out to all the council members, needless to say, none of us here are accounting graduates. None of us are controllers. None of us are specialists in budgets. Although we are responsible for making sure the budgets are correct and right and going in the right direction. None of us are experts on that. With that being the case, do not be embarrassed, shy, whatever you want to call it, to ask any question because I'd rather have you ask the question and make sure you get things clarified in your heads before we... before we vote on something, then unfortunately just let it go and think, oh my God, I don't wanna look bad. Because, and, and that's why he's put this together, and I've also asked, uh, our controller to, when he goes over every particular budget, he's gonna point out the major change from the years prior. So that we're focused on that, and not focused on something that's been approved year after year after year for the last 10, 12 years. Uh, there's no sense in obviously having a major discussion on that. The major discussion is on the major changes.
Right.
Everything he's, he's been doing, and I thank him for that. Ask him to just speak in just regular plain English, not industry English.
Very, very good, very good. Okay, if you're looking on page 28 at the very top, you'll see you have six col- six columns there. The first one is 2021 activity. What that is, that is, that is, um, that is, um, 2021 activity is the audited numbers for that line item. So, when you're looking at the, uh, the 2020 activity, the expenses that are out there, those numbers, straight down the column, uh, those are actual numbers that were in that line item at the time of audit, and have been, and have been reviewed during audit. And, uh, that's what those numbers are there, actual activity. The 2122 amended budget, what that is, is what council approved last year in budget for this current year we're in, and then any amendments that may have occurred at council session. Uh, those numbers will reflect, will be reflected there. The 2122 activity, and this is important, the 2122 activity is activity through March 31st for goods and services, March 18th for payroll. Okay, so keep that in mind as we progress through these, March 31st for goods and services, and March 18th for payroll. The next column, up, Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry, you said March 13th or?
March 31st, 31st.
And what is goods and services?
Oh, um, paper, pencils, um, utilities, uh, water, sewer, uh, that type.
Cetera, cetera.
Yes, gasoline, y- you name it, that's it. Oh, that's it. Okay, now 2122 projected, that's, that's the art of the budget here. So I looked at every line item in the budget, every fund, every line. And I made my best estimate, looking at where we are today, where I think we're gonna end up at, talking with the department heads, especially on the capital side, what they're, what they're doing and what they're thinking. And I gave you my best number for the line, for the, for the expense that's showing there. Now, as we progress through, you may see a number in activity that is higher than what is being projected. And what happens is, you get a timing, there's a timing issue there, where I put the projection together, but when we ran the reports, expenses may be up there. Um, happens sometimes, I'll just bring it to my attention if I don't already do that. But in the end, you'll find, uh, that the 2122 projected activity is what I think we're gonna end up at, at 6/30 of 22.
So, so as we go down for personal service for salary elected people, we're gonna go to 100,640 requested.
Yeah, but now the next one is, yeah, the requested and the recommended is what is in front of you, that is.
So that, now that includes the salary and all the other things that you mentioned as far as personal goods?
Well, but for the salary line item, it will be salary.
So.
Okay.
So, I know we had the compensation commission.
Yes, sir.
What was that, uh, mayor's salary raised to?
Oh, okay, you, you, I'd have to get back with you on that. What you have is the, the 10640 that's sitting there. That would be what I think, uh, that starts off July 1st. And then, I'm taking into consideration the, 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 we're adjusting on January 1.
Okay, all for the, yeah.
Yes, sir, we're, we're looking at that, yes, I'm picking that up. When you look at, when we look at salaries, I'm looking at when that person, I looked at when that person is actually gonna step to the next part in the classification. Uh, and, and I'm picking that up, that's where the million dollars comes into play, uh, that we alluded to in the slide presentation. Okay? Um, so yes, that good question, yes, I'm looking at all that, and, and pulling that together. So when we look at, at, at the requested and recommended, that's what's before you for the upcoming budget. And that, the recommended budget ties into the proposed resolution. That all those numbers will add in and tie into the resolution. Okay? So, any questions on the header record? As we, and that will stay uniform regardless of what page we're on. That will not change, and it'll be there each and every time.
I know, I know I asked you earlier, and I just wanted to say one more time. And I asked for the breakdown of the personnel's.
Right.
We're gonna get that correct?
Yes, sir, you will get, the group for tonight, you will get on Thursday.
Okay, thank you. Well, but will you give them for the past as well?
What we will, you'll get, Margaret, what do you, what are we gonna provide?
No, what we're providing is, uh, what the salary in FTE's full-time equivalent staffing was approved for the budget for this year, what was that approved about? Compared to what are we forecasting for our staffing need and the salaries that would be in 23?
Will you give the past as well?
So, so you're comparing those two pieces?
Can you, are you gonna give the past as well, like we have here, I see you nodding your head, can we also get that, please?
So, I, what do you mean by the past?
So like, here you show what we had in 2021, what we're at, and then what we're projecting to be.
Well.
No, I'm gonna show you what we budgeted for the year we ended, 2022.
Just hang on.
So, so what, what we approved for the 2022 year compared to what we're forecasting for the 2023? I, I would now go back to the 1920 year or the 2020.
But in the past, we did that.
Well, at the end of the day, what you're gonna have here is, you're gonna see the actual expense for 2021. You, you can see the actual expense that we're projecting for, for 2122. And then you're gonna see the recommended budget for 2223. You're gonna see that.
Okay.
And that's in front of you right now. Now, as far as a breakdown by body, by FTE, we're gonna provide to you what the breakdown for 2223 is, who's making up that line item. I will highlight that in my discussion here tonight, but we will give you the paper detail on the 2223. Who is that, how much?
And I just wanna say with respect, please, and I don't mean this, and, you know, I know you guys worked extremely hard on this, and if I'm asking something, I, I, I know things are frustrating, uh, but in councilship, that's okay. I'm only asking because, because it's our job, you know? I'm not asking because I wanna make, because I'm here to dig, or I'm looking to be annoying, I'm, I'm only asking because
No, you're fine.
I was used to the, I was used to one from the past.
Yeah.
And so when I ask those questions, I know you guys say no or not in your head, I swear I'm just asking because I was so used to, I was, I was used to it from the past. And I've looked at the past budget from 2017, 2018, 2019, 2020. So when I read it here, I said, you know, what's going on? I, I, I didn't, I wasn't used to it. I was used to seeing everything broken down, and I, I know we're just having a discussion, and I'm, I'm just putting it out there.
But we do have to add in.
I just wanna be comfortable asking a question.
I understand, totally. But I do wanna, uh, add in, you know, this particular budget, we were delayed of putting it together, I'm talking about the controller's office and administration by one week, and we didn't, we were delayed by one week, keep in mind, within, I think, a year, a year and a half, like four or five controllers go through, um, City Hall. That's, I don't care if it's controllers, treasurer, accountants, clerks, any position. To have five in that short of a period is a lot of people. And unfortunately, without getting into the details, for some controllers that we had in the past, there was, let's just say, a little more work than they anticipated. But we have somebody that's doing a great job right now, and that's one of the reasons why, and, and they even spoke to me about it, they could not put all the information that we typically get together, because there's just so much to put together, and he just jumped on, uh, I don't know when he jumped on, I think it was about, was it three or four months ago or something?
Mid-March. Mid, 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 about mid-March.
Okay, so mid-March, and then beginning of April, now that he's all caught up, he's got a budget put together. So, we have to keep that in mind, that there's a lot on their plate, and, and, and we're blessed to have at least.
Counselor, I am not, I just wanna say, Councilor Chair, I am not undergrading anybody.
You're fine.
But all I'm asking is, I'm, I was used to a former budget, you know, a, a, a different platform. Now we're seeing a different platform.
Mm-hmm.
So I, when I, when I received it, and I went through it, it was difficult, I mean, I, I read it, and I wrote down my notes, and I understand.
Good, good.
I just have questions, that's all, as we know. I had questions in the past, I'm sure you've had multiple questions in the past as well.
Okay.
That's it, just the personnel, uh, itemized, it's just broken down properly.
Okay. Very good, thank you both, thank you, that's, very good. Okay, can we be it?
Go ahead.
All right, so what you have in front of you this evening, and you're gonna hear this now as we progress. You have the mayor's budget, we're looking to spend, we're recommending a 438,501-dollar operating budget for the mayor department, the mayor's department. In this department, you have the mayor, the chief of staff, and the mayor's secretary, 50% of her time. We've added, in this budget, the big changes here, is we've moved into this budget the applicable longevity, the applicable healthcare, the applicable life insurance, and the applicable employer social security and pension contributions that were in a different spot in the budget in years past. So this budget is up from, from, from 400, well, we're at 493,000 from last year amended, but we're looking at 438,000 for this year, to give you a feel. So please note, when, as we go through these budgets, employer healthcare, employer life insurance, employer contributions for social security, and employer contributions for pension, we're in a separate department as one lump sum last year. We've broken that out, we've put it into each department, so you can see the, the true cost of what the department is running. Okay?
So that's.
Yes, sir.
So that's one of the questions I had on, on here, when I went through this, I, I had on here, are these new, why? You've kinda explained, but the question I have for you, you're saying they were all, you said in a different department, what department were these all in?
Okay, so they were in the 200 general government department.
Okay.
Okay, and we will see that tonight, we, we will get there, and I'll show you the open spaces in the department, uh, where you're gonna see a blank, and you're gonna go, what happened there? Well, we've spread those numbers, you just, we just picked the mayor to go first, and we could've started at the 200 department.
Are, are these on the slide? Uh, there's paperwork on slides where we can project them?
They, they, I don't have that, I'm sorry, sir, I don't, I don't have that.
That's fine, I just, I think people were asking.
Okay.
So, so I tell you, so the, the clerk's office has got a copy, and then these are also online.
Yes.
So if somebody wants to see the specifics of these, they're welcome to print them out, you know, online, and bring them here, or whatever they want.
Correct.
These are online.
Right.
Counselor Chair?
Go ahead.
Sorry, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
We can go to line, line item 100, that says part-time?
Yes, sir.
What's that exactly, part-time? Is that, uh, are these the police you're talking about from a different department?
No, no, this, this would, the ones in the part-time piece would be 56.5 is set up. That, and I don't have that, do you have, you know, who's the part-time?
Jacqueline.
Oh, we have, we, here we go. There you go.
In the mayor's part-time department, we have an intern, which her name is Jacqueline, we have Bob Ankrep, and we have John Sadekian.
So this is all part of the part-time?
Part, parts of their salary come from us, parts of them come from the cable department.
And my second question was, uh, line item Terry, what's that, uh, is that retirement previous year, 17,425?
I'm sorry, Councilman, which?
Line item 30 at the end?
Oh, 030?
030.
Got it. Okay, what that is, is this, um, when people retire here, uh, they'll have a, under contract obligation, they are entitled to receive vacation time and sick time payout for what has been accrued but hasn't been used. And it's dictated by contract, okay, or by personnel handbook. And what happens here is, when we pay that out, we pay it over a three-year, or four-year, or five-year period, depending on what the contract calls for. So this, what you're seeing there in 2021, somebody retired out of the mayor's office, and that was their last payment of. Yes, sir. And, and sometimes it's only one installment, and that could've been, uh, the, the, the payoff for, for sick and vacation accrual.
All right, thank you.
Sure. Yeah, Mayor, you, you wanna sit here, you wanna get on the hot seat? All right, we'll, we'll keep Mary on on the hot seat. All right, very good. Okay, as, as we go through here, it's pretty, it's very straightforward, there's, there's really nothing else here, uh, over and above what, what has been here in the past. Any other questions regarding the mayor's budget?
Can you just clarify just a little bit, um, the difference between requested budget and recommended budget? Because they seem to be, not they seem to be, they are the same numbers on a regular basis. I know you mentioned that the recommended budget is what's in the resolution, but they are the exact numbers across the board.
Correct. Good point, Council, Council Chair. So what happens is, when, when this, what you're looking at is, is the tool we use to put the budget together. So when the departments come in, they come in with what they think they want, and, and sometimes they shoot for pie in the sky, and sometimes they, they're very conservative. But we take their, their raw request, and we put it into the requested column. Okay? And then what, what happens is, we meet with the departments, we look at our revenue restrictions, we look at our, at where we're going in the near future, where the city is going, and then we work with the departments to get the dollar values, uh, where they, where you see them, where they equal. We talk, talk through the numbers, we talk through the, um, the requests, and we make adjustments one way or the other, so that we can make a good recommendation to council. So, we're coming to you in lockstep, uh, as one group, saying, this is what we need in order to run the department, or to run the city for the upcoming fiscal year. Good question.
So just to clarify, the requested budget is what that particular director asked for? And then the recommended budget is what, between the director and administration have come to a conclusion at the end, that that's the, that's the final number they're coming through as a package, as a, as a group?
Right.
They ask us.
Right, 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 so, so, so for instance, the mayor.
Negotiations against.
Right, there's, yeah, there's, yeah, the sausage is being made.
Okay.
Okay, and, uh, the mayor comes in with a little bit higher number on one line item, or a little lower on another. Uh, we work it out, and then we move forward.
We have chicken instead of sausage?
Sure. Very good.
Go ahead, Council.
Okay.
One, one second.
I, I have one more, more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Benefits, that's, that's 726-point triple zero.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, in the amended budget, it was 162,616 for 2122.
Right.
And you're considerably less in 2223, is that because it was in different areas before?
That is correct, that would be part of it, okay, and also staffing, and, and who's there?
Okay. Well, it's better, so I'm happy.
Okay, very good. Any other questions? Okay, moving along.
I'm sorry, I have one, so just, uh.
Nope.
Thinking a lot, so what if we don't go with the recommended budget? If we approve something not the recommended budget, what happened there?
Okay, so, I, I will tell you what I will say, okay? So if you wanna add money, okay, I'm gonna say, where do you wanna make the cut? Okay, you, you saw the slide, you saw the, you know, where we're going, how, you have a structural expenditures over revenues, okay? So I'm gonna ask you each and every time, if you wanna add money, I wanna know where you're gonna cut. Okay, I need, it's gotta balance, I gotta have it. Okay, or, if you wanna come up with more revenue somehow, some way, revenue that we can, that is gonna be there, then I, I, that, we'll talk about that too. So, but at the end of the day, if you're looking to add, I'm, I'm gonna ask you for, for, for subtraction somewhere else. That's correct.
So but basically you're saying, like, if I don't, if I don't go with the recommendation, I, I'll be like, okay, we need to cut some money, for example, with this employee or that, or, that's what you're saying?
Well, what I'm saying is this, is, you wanna think more of a, of a program, okay? So let's say you wanted to add, you wanted to buy automobiles for, 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 for everyone in the mayor's office, okay? Okay, and you were looking at 175,000 dollars. I would ask you, okay, where else in the general fund budget would you like to cut in order to allow that expenditure to happen? And of course, you have to have buy-in from four out of the seven council members also. So, that, that's from a program standpoint of view, that's what I'm looking for here. Is, I need, you wanna take the 175,000 away from the police budget for police scout cars in order to give, as, as an example, as, to give to, to the mayor's depart, the mayor's office? That's what I'm looking for here.
Rapid people.
That's right, okay, that, there you go.
No, I'm saying in a way, like, figure like, this still probably has the part-time employees, and I'd be like, you know what, we need to cut down, cut, cut down the part-time employees somehow.
Okay.
And that's just a hypothetical. Yeah, just.
Yeah, yeah, well, if you wanna reduce.
Yeah.
Okay, you can reduce, uh, you're not gonna.
Then the director of that department has to deal with it?
Well, that's true. But the question you wanna ask is, is can you live with, can you provide the current level of city service that you're providing by making that cut?
Also, in addition, so these numbers that, uh, this is what I was talking about, we actually cut a lot of it off.
No, no, I'm not talking about this.
No, I'm, we were probably close to 5 million dollars over what we're talking about right now, so we have to cut a lot. So if we have to cut anything, we have to, because we have to know, we, we made it, as we can, what, what we're presenting right now. However, if you decide to try. However, if you decide to cut anything, we will start to go back and do a budget amendment, so it's gonna cause more work for all of us, including the council, for approving. So what we put here is what we think will affect the run of the city. So you can cut, like I said, part-time, we probably have to maybe have way into the year, we need more, we have to do a budget amendment, so it's useless and causing more work.
Good points, all good points. This is, this is excellent. This is the time to, to bring this type of, because we're gonna go through these now, and we're gonna move pretty quickly, and yeah, you wanna keep that in mind. You're providing a nice level of service, this is how you're doing it. Okay, how do you wanna make that adjustment? And, and we can, and we can work from there. Okay. Any other questions on page 28? Okay, let's move on to page 25. 25 of your book. And that is the city council's budget. Okay? And in the city council's budget, what you see there?
That's approved.
We're asking to appropriate $96,506. With that, uh, that would be the salaries, as outlined earlier, with, through the, through the study for the six council people, or the seven council people.
Did you make the correction we talked about?
I will in a second here, I'll be right there, yes, sir. Uh, and then we're looking at travel and education of, of $3,500, $500 apiece for each council person. In the fringe benefit, in the projected column, as, uh, the chair has, has pointed out, uh, there is a typo, $614,100. That should be $6,141. That, I typed it-
6141?
6141, that's what that should be.
Now, what fringe benefits do council get?
That is just the employer social security contribution, which is required by federal law.
Now, I see where-
If you opt in. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
We don't have our, um, legal fees that we once voted in, that we once had.
Okay.
Why don't we have that?
We can actually take it off from the legal fund, so we just, we might be able to track all legal to one, so we put all, all of it all into one.
But that poses a problem if we want to use an attorney like we did the last time, and have a budget for ourselves.
We can still use, we can still use, you know, any attorney that you guys recommend to council, because we decided from the last meeting that we had, we go back to the other one, the town that remains, but when-
Yes, well, we, well, we, when we ended the contract.
Yes, yes. So now, with, with this new year, obviously, the reason why we put the fund on there is, again, we wanna go back to all-
I understand.
What happened in the past, but this time, we can still use the funds from, uh, the, from the legal, uh, fund that we-
Because we have to go through corporation council anyway. Okay.
And we'll get, and we'll, I was just gonna say, we're gonna get to that in the next operating budget. Yes, sir.
You've seen budgets for other cities.
Yes, sir.
Do you, how often do you see, if you can say, city council being allocated a separate line item amount of money for, uh, uh, legal fees for their, all legal fees? I, I would think just generally never, or very rarely, but-
It's very rare. I've seen it one time. Out of all the municipalities I've been in, I've seen it one time, and it's been, it was a longstanding, uh, line item.
In another city, it was?
Yes. One, yes. You're welcome. Okay. Any other questions on the council budget? Okay, let's move along, let's go to page 40, corporation council, uh, in your budget. Okay, and here's where the legal fees reside, with the exception of labor, uh, this is where we put, uh, all the legal fees. You'll see, uh, corp council that is, that works for the, for the council here, uh, you'll see the, um, uh, the MMRA legal, uh, people here, and then we've also set up, uh, another, another line item for, basically, general, if you guys hire someone, uh, I put a name to it, but at the end of the day, uh, we, we beefed up the line item a little bit, uh, to, to allow for, uh, an unknown that is out there. So anyway, the corp council budget in total is $342,000. With that, uh, we have 198 allocated to corp council, 139 allocated to, uh, the attorneys coming out of MMRA, and another 4,000 going to, uh, other, uh, legal people. Any questions here?
Yeah, I had a question. Why was there such a big jump from the 2021, '22 amended budget of $300,000 to the projected activity of 2021, '22 of $339? Was that the, I know there was a little, uh, some raise that was given to corporation council at one point, is that it?
Basically, uh, what I'm looking at here on the $339 projected activity, it really comes down to, uh, the Seacrest Wardle, um, O'Reilly Rancilio firm, uh, those expenses were, they're very variable, they're, they're a variable expense, they just happened to charge, you had issues that they billed on, and their rates applied, uh, the corp council is pretty straightforward, and at the end of the day, um, the final Miller Canfield bill there was for the, for the debt issue that you guys, that you guys, uh, floated. Yes.
Counselor.
Go ahead.
I wrote a note here, and I know you, you explained this earlier, but I mean, to me, I was just asking, we have our labor, labor attorney that we have-
Right.
Through our HR director.
Right.
But it's not being put with our corporation council.
Correct. So this, so basically, when, when labor is, when labor is working with the city, they're working through the human resources department. In the past, this, the labor attorney was in the 200 general government section, so with, with the, that gen, with the labor attorney working so closely with human resources, we felt it was a better fit with the human resources department than here with corp council. Because we're gonna get the other attorneys through corp council, we're gonna work with corp council to bring that new player in. So with, with labor, council will approve labor, but that, it will, that firm will work pretty much exclusively with, with the human resources staff. Good question, councilman. Did you wanna add something, uh, Mariana?
Seacrest Wardle is for water and sewer, not any more.
Okay. Okay.
What was that?
Okay, so, uh, the, uh, Seacrest Wardle last year was under, uh, water sewer, they did some water sewer work for the city last year. Okay? You're welcome. Any other questions regarding, uh, the two ten, corp council? Okay, moving along. Treasury Department, page 54, Madam Treasurer.
Oh, yes, that's me.
We wanna go to page 54? Sure. No, no, you gotta come, oh, you're-
Oh, mine too, mine too. Get comfortable, just for a brief moment.
Yep, yep, yep. Okay.
Did he get comfortable?
Did.
I'm gonna have you to chat with what it has to sound, this is just your backup for our, our budget, this is what we have for you. That way you can look at page one and two, or excuse me, two and three of that packet.
Oh, no.
And that's a breakdown of everything that's in our budget. Yes, ma'am, or your sir.
So I just verified something, um, for those in the audience, we want to be sure that the budgets were available for those that either did not have access to online, or maybe didn't have it with them. So for those in the audience that would like to look at the budget, we have a booklet right at the podium. Vince, I know earlier you wanted, your facial expressions. Right at the podium is the actual budget, you're welcome to look at it, or pass it down if you wanted.
And I have extra copies that are also available for those who are here this evening, so.
So is this your presentation, or is this gonna still be David's Buddhist?
It's mine.
No, it's still gonna be David's Buddhist. Okay.
You're welcome. Okay. What you have before you this, this evening, uh, is the treasurer's, uh, budget. We are ask, uh, we're asking to appropriate $579,418. Inside of that budget, you will find, uh, the treasurer, the deputy treasurer, and four, four staffers. With that, um, I do have one change, one update to the, uh, to the budget in the, uh, salaries line item, the 2, 215,118, uh, that needs to increase by $5,950. I missed the longevity piece to the wages and salaries. Uh, I picked up the, uh, I picked up the social security, but I did not pick up the wages and salaries. So that final number should be 221,068.
221.
068. Okay? And we will add that into the final numbers as we progress through life. Okay. Uh, with that, with that being said, we have a slight increase in the travel and education, uh, we bumped that up by $500 to, to $3,000 to pay for, uh, various certifications and trainings for the, for the treasurer and the deputy treasurer. Uh, again, we've added the, uh, the employer, social security and pension, the healthcare, and, uh, uh, life insurance that are applicable to, to this department, and basic- Go ahead.
That wasn't like that in the past, correct?
That is correct, it used to be all one lump sum, yes, sir, absolutely. Uh, and with that, um, we, we, uh, with that, we, we've increased the department expenses for those, for those services. Uh, we also have, um, reflected in the contractual services line item for the treasurer, what she's actually spending in that, in that, uh, in that recommended budget, uh, for contractual services, we're looking at $30,000, the treasurer consistently is spending that. So in the discussion when we are with the treasurer, we brought that number to where, what she needed in order to operate her department in that area. With that, I, I would turn it over for questions.
Counselor. Go ahead. Uh, this question would be for the, uh, for the treasurer. Now, the travel and education, is that education gonna be available for everyone who works in the, in the treasury, or just yourself, or the?
That is, yes, councilman, it is for everyone, however, I want, oh, do I need a mic?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm kinda loud, though.
The answer is yes to that question, however, what I do wanna note that you have the deputy and myself that are participants in the Michigan Certified Public Treasurers Association Program, so therefore, we will consume a lot of that budget, because that is a program that mandates we attend certain programs and trainings, so it does consume a lot of it. But I always try to have training available for all members of the treasury, all of our staff.
I just wanna make sure they get also their portion of training, as it's an important-
Absolutely.
Function of the treasury department.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Any other questions here for the treasurer?
No, sir.
All right, very good, thank you.
May, may I?
Yeah, sure.
Just real quick, I just want you to look at page two, some of the cost savings that we're doing, and you have samples of invoices in your packet, but I would like you to take a look at page six. We wanna save money in our department, and one of the things we're going to do is eliminate the tax inserts that are mailed out to taxpayers, and it's gonna be on the back of the tax bill, all that information, and that's gonna save us quite a bit of money, so we're looking to save money and be more efficient, but also, we're looking at possibly in-house our winter tax bills, again, to save some additional funds for the city.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Very good, Madam Treasurer.
Any other questions?
All right, very good. Okay, moving along. We're gonna go to page, we're gonna, we're gonna go to page 48, and we're gonna deal with the controllers' budget, nicely done. Madam Treasurer.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Page 40.
Let's see how you padded that one. Let's check this one out here.
All right.
Go over this one real close here.
Okay. So in the controllers' office, we are looking, uh, to, to appropriate or, or budget $562,272. And within that department i- is a controller, a deputy controller, and four staffers that, that work out of that department. Okay? And that includes, uh, purchasing and accounts payable. Now, please know, um, I am the, I'm the acting interim controller, and currently, right now, Plant Moran Gap is running, is, is working the, uh, deputy controller position. So please know that, um, we're looking to phase out and to bring in full pu, full, uh, full-time positions, uh, people who can live and grow here, uh, with the community. So, uh, we set these up as if we're gonna, somebody will be here, uh, taking Plant Moran Gap's place and taking, uh, the interim controller's place, and you have someone for the next 15 to 20 to 25 years. With that being said, uh, the Plant Moran Gap contractual piece is allocated in the 200 department, and we're gonna get there in a couple minutes, and I'll point that out to you when we get there.
Why is this $70,000 more than 2021?
Basically, y- you're paying for, uh, you're, 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 you're paying for a competitive salary for, for both a controller and for a deputy controller.
How much does the current controller pay?
The current, current controller is appropriated for $115,000.
And I'm, I'm, I'm just curious, maybe for the administration, and just to clarify, why would that not go through us as a council? Like when they're hired, the salary?
With that salary?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's right, okay. All right.
I'm sorry, I just wanna ask, when we, when we, when we did last year's, Henry Jawad was around $80,000.
Approximately.
I remember that. Did we give a raise to the controller?
It was when we brought Indiana Erby.
What is it?
It was when we brought Indiana Erby, before we brought her along, we had a discussion with the council members to increase that salary amount.
To 115?
Yeah.
Now, David, I, and not to make anything personal, is that what your salary is today, or are you on an hourly tax?
I'm on an hourly rate. Okay, that's where I'm at. Do you want, do you want the rate? $80 an hour. You're welcome.
A- any, to, to make it clear, any discussion we have is not towards a particular individual or a person, it's the position that we are discussing.
And please know, I, I don't get fringe benefits either, that's just, I don't, I don't get healthcare, I don't get a pension, I don't get life insurance, I don't-
Are you part-time or full-time?
I, right now, I am full-time, you have me full-time. The mayor.
And you just, and I want you to know, David, I, I met David, uh, six, seven months ago. Like I, and what, what have I told you every time I've walked in there? One, you're always working.
I don't-
Two, you, you have come above and beyond.
Well, thank you very much.
But these are the numbers that I, I just want to see, that's all.
No, no, good.
I just wanna make sure that we are being fiscally responsible, because-
Yep.
Every single person here ran on transparency, being fiscally responsible-
Sure.
And, and, and being providing to these residents.
Sure, absolutely. So please, now, the, the, the controllers' package is a full package, as well as the deputy controllers is a full package, mine is not a full package.
We don't have, we don't have a controller right now either.
Right, right, correct.
So you're operating on both.
Right. That's right. Well, Plant Moran Gap is filling in as the deputy. Right. That's right. Well, Plant Moran Gap is filling in as the deputy.
Well, the Plant Moran Gap, we approved for the four hundred thousand, correct?
Yeah, right. And you're going to see that come in as we go through. That's right.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is you're acting as two individuals today.
Yeah, but they're helping me. Please know that. Okay. All right, very good. All right. Okay, with that being said, any, any other questions on page sixty-five or sixty-six?
I, I had a question. So when we go from two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two projected activity, which is three hundred and six thousand eight eight eight, but then the requested was about thirty-five thousand dollars more roughly. Do you know why that is? What's, what's the main purpose for the big increase?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I did not pick up the account number. Can you give me the account?
Okay, so you, the projected activity for salaries was almost three hundred and seven thousand.
Yes, sir.
The requested budget is about three hundred and forty and some change.
Correct.
Roughly around, you know, I don't know, thirty-five thousand roughly in difference.
Correct.
What's, what, what, what is that accounting for?
The big, the big increase is moving the, the, the controller, that salary, pumping up from a hun, from approximately eighty thousand dollars to a hundred and fifteen. Okay, that's there. Also, we included the longevity piece. You'll see that in the footnote there underneath the salary. Okay? Also, what you have in there is you have, remember, you have four staffers in there. Okay? And there, if somebody is stepping from one, from step two to step three to step four, because they're not at their max salary scale, we're picking that up also in the number.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just the same, before, like last year, we had part-timers for forty-nine thousand eighty-five dollars. So we don't have any more part-timers with the same-
Okay, good question, councilman. Very good question. So back in September, late September, early October, that was me. So what ended up happening was I came in on a part-time basis to help Dearborn Heights with the audit, if you'll recall. And I was hired on a part-time basis out of the finance department. And I put together the final work papers and got the audit, or got the books in shape with the help of Plant Moran Gap and in order to allow for, for the audit to go forward. And so that was me. Okay, hopefully, you never see that. That's why you don't see another, another expense there. Hopefully, we have that taken care of going forward this year, and you don't have that expense next year. Good question. Any, any other questions? Okay, excellent. Okay, moving along. We're going to go to page thirty-
One last one, controller. Will you stay another year?
Thank you very much. Let's, let's move on to page thirty, councilman.
Page what?
Page thirty-two.
So the movie would say so there is a chance. What's that?
Okay, page thirty-two begins the general government budget. This is, as history will dictate, this has been the city's catch-all expenditures. This is where expenses that touch every department usually reside. I'm going to go through this with you. And then basically, we will, when, when other department heads come in, we will retreat back to this department. But I do want to cover it as a, as an overall, overall presentation. So in the two-hundred department, we have moved out a lot of the expenses, as I've alluded to earlier, healthcare, life insurance, pension contributions. And we're asking in this department to spend, to appropriate, appropriate fifteen million, three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. And inside of this, so you'll notice at the top on line seven, one, five, zero, 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 at the top there, you'll see nothing for social security or for hospital insurance. Again, we've moved that to the departments. The insurance buyouts, what that is, is that's the pay in lieu of healthcare. The city offers a program where you don't take the, you don't take the health insurance. You, you, you buy, you buy out and, and you're paid a stipend. And we're looking to spend approximately a hundred and two thousand dollars there. The hospital Gengo account, which is seven, one, six, two hundred. What that is, is that is the retiree healthcare for general city employees. That number is analyzed and given to us from Plant Moran. And we picked that up and, and that's, that number is what we're expecting to spend for retiree healthcare in the upcoming fiscal year on a pay-go basis. So on a month-in, month-out basis.
That doesn't go through to our, what we're short on our open?
That, well, it, it passes through. The tech, the actual technical, you're technically right, but from an accounting standpoint of view, it passes through. And that keeps the blue card, blue cross cards on. Okay. The next, the next line item, you'll notice, you got two small line items there, but longevity and public act three forty-five pension. So again, those, those costs have been spread to the departments. And then you have three forty-five insurance. Now, the gentleman that was at the podium earlier alluded to this. We're looking at three point seven million for, for public, for public act three forty-five healthcare. Again, that number comes from the Plant Moran. And that's the number we're going to levy on, three point seven six four million. And that keeps, again, passes through the trust and keeps the blue cross cards on for those employees that are eligible for a blue cross card, those retirees that are eligible for a blue cross card.
Those are the ones that are fully retired, not in a drop program.
That is correct. That is correct. Okay, moving along to two, two, seven, two, two point zero, zero, two. You have a, where am I here? Three forty-five expenditures. This is the ask from the public safety pension system for operating expenses for the upcoming fiscal year, six hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred dollars.
Is that administration cost?
That is. So that's your investment people, your legal people, your, the staffers.
How many people is that?
Well, the, the public safety pension people, those are your investment brokers. Those are your, those are, those are all the vendors that they use on their side. We did not have a conversation with them directly about exactly who. They passed a resolution saying this is what they needed and they itemized that.
I'd like to know how many people are getting paid six hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred dollars?
It's, no, this is service, this is a service.
I understand, but the service is coming from somebody.
Yes, there are firms, yes, there are, there are investment firms, and there are legal firms. And then there are, there are two, there are two part-time staffers that are involved with that. That's what's there. I can give you the detail. If you want the, we can invite the public act. The P A three forty-five people are going to be here, what is it, four twenty? On four twenty-nine. And if you, we can make sure that they're there. And then we can, we can come in and we can have them here for you.
Because every, you know, for, for years, going through the budgets, I, I've seen where we had admin costs just about on every page. And it was a large sum of money
Right.
of six hundred thousand dollars. I'm trying to figure out who's administered, who we paying this kind of money to?
Well, remember, that you have over a hundred and, I don't have the number at my fingertips, over a hundred million in investments. Okay, so we're not dealing with a, a small amount of money here. There's a significant sum that they're managing.
Well, part of it's commissions too, I think.
You're paying, yeah, you're paying for, you're paying for, for that service.
Does this number include commission too or just service fees?
The six sixty-three includes, I don't, that I don't, I'm not sure.
I'd like to know if it's commissions, because if people that are investing their money-
No, no, this is, this is, this is the employer contributions that we're making to the pension system. And then they're turning around and investing in order to provide the benefit. Okay, so what this is, is you've agreed through contract to make an employer contribution to fund a defined benefit pension. And-
Well, act three forty-five is not really a contract. That's a-
It's a state law.
State law.
That's a state law, yeah. But underneath that provisions, you have these public safety officers who are, who have negotiated and we've agreed to provide a defined benefit pension. With that, that, that investment, that, that balance of, of assets under their supervision has grown to over, and I don't have the number, over a hundred million dollars. Okay, so these fees pay for that service. If you want to get into more detailed questions about that service, they'll be here on the twenty-ninth.
We'll skip that.
We'll get that here. Yeah.
So two things. Number one, first of all, let me get my question answered, if you don't mind.
Sure.
If you notice on those same fees, the operating expenses under the six sixty-three, but, oh, actually, I've got my question answered. We're good, we're good on it.
Okay.
But I do want to point out something. If there's any issue or anything that is, that needs a little bit more in-depth looking into, Dana is going to add it on our, we don't have nothing so far, Dana, by the way. But Dana will be able to add it. And then on the reserve date, we'll be able to sit down and go more in-depth. Maybe possibly we could invite them to come in on that, or they, actually, that's not twenty-nine, is it? No. The reserve date is the-
Six, or the twelfth, yeah, it's in May.
So if we want to possibly bring somebody from them here, or if it's very important, we're going to have them, worst case, on Zoom.
Sure.
You know, one of them could come in on Zoom and explain to us. Or, or another possibility, maybe Mariana or somebody can ask them and they could just send us a long email describing their fees.
Okay. Okay, to, to give a breakdown on-
Let's start with a breakdown for right now. And then if that's not satisfactory to all the council members, whatever breakdown they send us, at that particular point, we'll go ahead and add on the reserve date. Does that work for your council members? Okay.
Fantastic. Okay, yeah, we'll get that, we'll get that out to you ASAP.
Right.
Okay. As we work through, you'll see the three forty-five pre-funds, one point zero six two million and four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Those are the, we're, we're coming into compliance with public act two oh two of twenty seventeen. That's the state law that requires you to be forty percent funded for healthcare benefits. Now, what I want to point out here is this is we're relying on last year's actuarial study. If you recall, last council meeting, you approved the new study. And that will be happening in the next sixteen to ninety days. And you'll see different numbers here next budget year. Or we'll come back and amend the budget, depending on what that number actually ends up being. Any questions on those two line items? Okay, as we work through, we have a workers' comp liability that we may or may not use, but we need to appropriate for. And then you'll see the next big numbers here is sanitation. We touched on this a little bit in the slide presentation. Three point four five zero million for pickup and for disposal. And then the professional contracts. You'll see the independent auditor, the new auditor will be Alan C. Young. The reason for that is because we have Plant Moran Gap working on the books. We cannot have Plant Moran audit, audit Plant Moran Gap. That's a big no-no in the industry. So we had to go out, we had to get new auditors, which was approved by council at the last, in the March meeting, the last March meeting. That's Alan C. Young. They'll be here on, I'm hoping, next month. Now, the deputy controller, PM Gap, you can see the PM Gap contract that we're looking for. That's sixteen hundred hours. That gives us sixteen hundred hours. Okay, moving along to the next page, page thirty-four. You'll see the, in the blue there, that's the footnote. You can see the various, the various numbers. You'll note on the Ny Heart line item, you'll see five thousand for Ny Heart. That needs to be changed to ten thousand, two hundred dollars.
How much?
Ten thousand, two hundred dollars. That was approved Monday night at city council. Okay?
Sixty-three?
Sixty-three, go ahead. You'll see Ny Heart, Gatsby seventy-five in the footnote.
Yes.
Okay, and I have, we have five thousand set up for that. And it's because they're doing a bigger study, it's going to jump to ten thousand, two hundred.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. And then as you go to, to the second contractual services line item, you'll see there pay velocity, that is our payroll software. That is the big number for, for ninety thousand. Oh? Two questions. Yes, sir, go ahead.
I see here we have footnote amount sixty-six thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars. But we're not budgeting for it. What is that?
Okay, you, could you give me the line?
I'm sorry, is that a, is this roof?
Okay. Uh, the sixty, yeah, that's a one-time, oh, that's the roof expense for this building.
Okay, so we're not-
You won't see that again next year.
Okay, my also labor attorney's outside, I'm looking at it's also here for sixty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Plus sixty-five thousand for human resources.
Right, so we move, so the sixty-three thousand is the projected for this year. Okay, and then for next year, the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, you'll find that in the human resources section coming up in the next few minutes. Okay, you'll see that there. Okay, good questions. All right, the other issue is you have a Conica maintenance. I'm sorry, the other issue that's very similar is the Plant Moran audit. So that, that number is in conjunction with the work that I did. So what happened was this plant had to restart the audit once I finished. And you're picking up those expenses there. Moving along to smart bus expenses. So when you run the smart bus transportation program, here, those expenses show up in this department. Then you have publications and, and newsletters. And then you have your MMRMA insurance. That's your general liability that's paid for by the general fund. You'll also see it in the water sewer fund. There'll be a smaller number. Finally, as you move down to page thirty-five, you'll see street lighting. You'll see actually what, what we have to pay for DTE, approximately one point two million dollars. And then you're looking at the LED light program, phase one, for three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. And then we have the city-owned property purchase. What we're buying there is delinquent, delinquent tax properties that are ISOs that the city wants to get for strategic community development purchases. And that, that money is set up for that purpose. Then you have dues, memberships and subscriptions across the city. And then you have your sidewalk, or your weed cut cleanups are here at one fifty. And then we get reimbursed for that on the tax bill. And then finally, you have your debt issues. Okay, so coming out of the general fund out of this department, we have three debt issues. The first one is the sanitation debt issue. That one will be complete June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. The second debt issue is for the fire station bonds. That one will finish up June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. And then we also have the telephone, telecopier, or the copier debt issue that will end June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. Any question, any other questions on page thirty-four or thirty-five?
Fire station bonds, those are in regards to specific, like equipment, like fire trucks, et cetera, correct?
Yes. I believe that's a fire truck.
You look at, and council chair, uh, nine, six, three, zero, 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 sidewalk weed.
Yep. That is your blight program?
Where did that go?
Okay, so now, if you're talking about nine, six, three, zero, 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 we're appropriating, we're asking to appropriate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is that the line item? Yes, well, what's happening here, well, what was the men, what, what was, if you take a look at the twenty twenty-one column?
Ninety-five.
Yeah, okay. And then you're, and then we appropriated a hundred and fifty for twenty-one, twenty-two. We're at forty-six as of March thirty-first. We're at forty-six, three thirty-five. I think we're going to end up about seventy-five, seventy-six thousand dollars. And then we're coming back. So if we have a wet spring and nobody's cutting the grass, and you got to get out there and you got to-
I would have even upped it to three hundred thousand.
Okay. So that's, that's what we're looking at. So, and remember, you're going to get, that, that's going to float, so if we're cutting grass, that's going to be a lien on the property and we're going to catch that.
We'll catch that debt.
That's right, sir. That's exactly correct. Okay, all right, great questions. Any other questions here on, on page thirty-four or thirty-five? Okay, we're going to move along to page thirty-six. That is the total for this department, and that completes two hundred. I hope that covered the ground for you and you can see now what we're trying to accomplish here. There's a lot of big numbers here. We want to allocate them to the departments, and I think we're, we're accomplishing that. Okay, we're going to go to page fifty of your book. This is human resources. Margaret, you want to come up? So we're, a brief overview of the department. As Margaret's walking up, we're, we're asking to appropriate three hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars in this department. You have two people and one part-timer. You have the director and a human resources specialist, along with one part-time staffer. Again, we've added the life, health, and the other fringe benefits we talked about earlier. And the other big move is we moved the, the labor attorney into human resources. Everything else is pretty straightforward. Any questions here on page fifty for Margaret and the department?
Sorry, I had a question.
Sure.
So on the two thousand twenty-one amended budget was one nineteen. Activity, of course, one twenty-seven, but projected activity for twenty-one, twenty-two is one sixty-three. But then we dropped down to one thirty-five. Why was there the drop?
No, no, the labor attorney is, is counted in another category. Is this even on?
I got it, yeah.
Okay, all right. So in that salary line item, you have payouts. So, you know, we had two people that were looking at retirements, and so that's probably what's reflected in that number.
Okay, and then the second question, you've kind of answered it already. I had on here in my notes, I wrote down when I went through this over the weekend, says why labor attorney? Why is it in here now? It's a sixty-five thousand.
So really, just to give us an opportunity for that to really be managed when it was in another account unaccountable in terms of how that was being used, is because it's an opportunity to monitor those expenses going forward and a more connected to the activity that we would be looking for that attorney's firm to provide to us.
Okay, so it's not a completely new position, obviously?
Correct. It's, it's, it's a expense that's being moved from another place in the budget where it was more difficult to assign the activities, account for the expenses that we were incurring there. So we're hoping by putting it here, a little more close monitoring, you know, we can be managing that expense for us going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor, go ahead.
Yeah, and Mr. Sabuda, is, I would think that normally, this would be the best way to do it. Labor unemployment with personnel.
Yes, sir.
We had a separate attorney just for water.
Yes.
We would show him his expenses, he or she expenses, excuse me, in the water budget.
Right, absolutely.
Is this what you see in other cities or?
Yes, that's, that's exactly. Now, the other issue is this, is if we're showing a water expense in the general fund, we will get reimbursed from the water fund as a reimbursement to cover that cost. So, and yes, this is what I've seen in others, in other municipalities. It really comes down to managing the attorney. Okay, managing those bills and making sure we're getting our best bang for the buck and making sure that they're working on what we need them to work on.
Right, and then but showing what, instead of lumping all the legal expenses together and saying, oh, look, our city attorney is, you know, the expense, the legal expenses go against that activity.
That is correct.
HR activity and make sure that police fire testing.
General liability, absolutely, all that, all that falls in.
Labor negotiations is what I meant to say.
Yeah, there you go. Okay?
Thank you.
You got it, you're welcome. Any other questions on page fifty? Yes? There's the director, there's another full-timer, and then there's a part-timer. Okay, we're gonna move along to the commissions now. If you turn the page.
Forty-four.
Four, thank you, Mr. Chair, forty-four in your book. We're gonna have the, I believe it's forty-four.
Is it X seventy-eight?
Forty-four, it is the civil service commission. What you have here, excuse me, Margaret? What you have here is the board fees, and you have testing supplies and publications for civil service positions. Any questions here on page forty-four?
I don't think anybody does.
Okay, very good, we'll go to page forty-five. Oh, I'm sorry, forty-six. Let's go to page forty-six. You'll have the Public Act Seventy-Eight Commission. In that commission, that's for public safety, and again, you have the board, board fees, and then you have testing materials, you'll have background checks, you'll have postings. Any questions here on page forty-six?
It's a simple one, maybe it's just my ignorance on this, but testing fifty thousand or twenty-five thousand, it seems a, and I don't know that particular department, but it just seems a little high.
So it's really a number that includes other expenses in terms of marketing for open positions, what the testing's gonna be, and I had asked for that dollar value to remain the same going forward. Because we do have so many open positions in terms of our ability to recruit and fill those positions, and we're looking at testing, going through an online testing organization where the testing results come back more quickly. We're trying to shrink the amount of time that it takes us to recruit from, from posting to point of hire, which now is rather lengthy time for that, and so we're looking to try to shrink that. But that testing is not just testing, it's also the opportunity to, on occasion for certain positions, spend a little bit more in terms of how we post something on Indeed, or where we are with respect to LinkedIn. You know, the, the free opportunities, we always use those, but as we struggle to have a good candidate pool, then we want the opportunity, the resources to be able to do that on a position-by-position basis. In order to be able to generate the applicants that we need to make the hires we need to make.
Okay, thank you.
You okay?
I'll be all right, just.
Do you wanna take a break? We can take a break?
No, no, I'll fine, just keep going.
Okay.
He, he asked for Snickers, but I, I'm one of those healthy guys, so I.
I actually went and bought one.
I gave him the healthier stuff, he didn't like those.
He wants a Snicker. We can adjourn if you guys would like.
No, we still have something to go.
All right, Councilor Chair, I just have background checks here, I see we're charging, you know, we never did that in the past, and now we're budgeting for twenty-five thousand for twenty-two. What is, what is that, how is that?
Sure, so, so what had been happening in the past is that our police department had been conducting those background checks for us. We were paying some of our police officers overtime in order for them to do that, with a difficult cost to try to track. So we have looked at other resources to go forward, again, that is an estimated number, looking at how many vacancies we have, how many background checks do we do, what's our turnover? Looking like how frequently would we need to be able to do that. We are not always successful in retaining the candidates that we do recruit and hire, and so, you know, we haven't begun to really track what our turnover costs are with respect to that. But we are looking to use a testing, a third-party testing resource, we have a couple of different vendors that we found that we feel are viable. We had only been using our police department, having our police officers do that, again, it contributed to overtime and the length of time for that to occur was, was a challenge.
Does this take away from our union, though?
No, this doesn't take away from our, how would this take away from our union?
Police officers, I mean, as a job, and I'm just asking, so I mean, we're subcontracting this out instead of it being in-house.
In-house, we were paying overtime for our employees to do this.
It takes away from police patrol also. It's also cheaper to hire a quantity than to pay an officer. Okay, I mean, again, guys, did I ask a question? Perfect.
And please don't.
It does take away from the union, by the way, because police officers are union, so it does.
Well, please remember, we're looking to break the, the million-dollar ceiling.
Great, but we don't know how many of those people that are taking that background check are working overtime, what if they're not working overtime? What if they're the ones that are working and they're not controlling?
So the practice in the police department had been.
Across the board.
The practice in the police department had been, when you were doing a background check, then you were given four hours of overtime, even if you were doing that within your scheduled time. We count overtime and comp time for police and as overtime.
It does.
Any other questions, page thirty-eight? Okay, we're gonna move along, we're gonna go to the city clerk, page forty-two. Madam Clerk. Okay, you're welcome. I know, it's a workout. We're gonna go to page forty, come on up, come on up. But wherever you are, you're, you're elected. If you wanna go there, come on over here. Yeah, you can, you can, yeah, we can go both.
No, not yet.
Yeah, please have a seat.
Hi.
Okay, hi, in the clerk's department, what we are looking at is, we're gonna go over two departments here, we're gonna go over clerk, and we're gonna go over the election. We're gonna start in the clerk's office on page forty-two. We're looking to appropriate four hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and five dollars for, for the clerk's, city clerk's budget. You'll find there the clerk, the deputy clerk and two staff members. We, again, we've added the human resources, and we've had, we've added the, I'm sorry, the fringe benefits, health, life, longevity, and the employer contribution for pension and social security. Everything else is pretty straightforward over last year. Be happy to entertain any questions the council has.
Why was there a difference from the projected activity of three eighty-eight to the requested budget of four twenty-nine? Now, I know you said you added fringe benefits, life insurance, hospital, but those were also a part of the projected activity, with just a slight increase of eight thousand under hospital insurance. And another increase on overtime of about three thousand, but yet there was quite a bit of a difference there.
Yeah. I'm looking at the fringe benefits, I'm just looking here. It looks pretty, three eighty-eight to four twenty-nine, I'm going from three eighty-eight to four twenty-nine, it looks pretty straightforward. Oh, we have, no, I don't think that's there, oh, no, that's not there, no, oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Can I, can?
I got it, I'm sorry, it is the retirement piece.
Retirement?
The retirement piece, so what's happening here is we're paying, that's the big number, thank you, Mariana.
But that one's just carried over, so that was always there, correct?
No, no, it's not part of the, it's brand new.
Why?
Because the, we have one person who's gonna be retiring out of the clerk's department.
Okay.
That's what I was trying to, that's what I was trying to tell you guys.
So, we're gonna lose, well.
Well, I'd like to, if I, if I can speak, I would.
They're all in their forties, I don't get it.
I wish. So that you know, okay, when I left the union, when I was appointed, I, or when anyone retires, I left that bargaining unit, okay? But I earned time when I was there, I had sick time, I had vacation time, and I don't know what else. Anyway, when you retire, you get paid out over three years, so that's part of it, okay? And the other part is that our deputy clerk is gonna be retired.
But, I'm gonna stick around and.
But, but, no, 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 you're, you're absolutely right, she should be up here with me, but she's not down over there, that's okay, no, 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 'cause we are, we are. She's retiring, so that's your other line item. But I wanted to let you know too, that she doesn't have a definite date, she is going to do what's best for us as a city, and as her, I know, I'm not either, I'm not either. So anyway, we are shorthanded in, in, when we get to the elections part, I'll go over that, okay? But we are shorthanded in the back room, so, because Kathy is so kind-hearted, she has agreed to stay and work in the back room, as well as train whoever gets that position, as deputy clerk. Because there's a lot of details, you know that. It's posted right now, I think it was just posted, I don't know, I'm gonna attend the civil service meeting again tomorrow, just to see where that process, how that process is.
Well.
I know, I know. And she will stay, and, and the reason why she's doing it this year is, okay, and when we get into the elections, I'll explain that a little bit more, is that more activity is going to happen this year than next year. It's a gubernatorial election.
People don't understand how hard this is.
I know, thank you, and next year's a local.
A monumental thing that you guys do, it's just, there's no words to describe it.
Yeah, so she is going to do what's best, she's really having a hard time too, go ahead.
I mean, I am having a hard time with it, yeah, I mean, I could stay till the end of the year, but then the problem is, you bring somebody on, and they come on next year, and they have no experience, no training.
This way it'll be hands-on.
If we get somebody on now, I can, you know, take, I mean, take a pay cut, work in the back room, I'm willing to do that to help the election, and to train somebody, because I know the work that goes into this. And what I want is this to be a smooth transition and to have no impact on the city whatsoever. I mean, that's, you know, so that's why I'm doing this, it's, it's like trying to plan what the best time to retire is, that's gonna have the least effect on the election process in the city.
And while we're very happy for her, we don't want her to leave.
I'd like to thank you for your years of service, so thank you.
But she haven't, she hasn't given us a definite date yet, okay, okay.
We're gonna.
What was that? I knew we said.
She might reconsider.
We've got the doors, we've got the doors locked, so.
You must not be looking at her webpage.
Employing the opportunities.
No, I'm older.
Yeah, I am.
So, we are gonna keep her as long as she.
Like I said, the doors are locked, so she can't get out anyways.
There's one other thing on the clerk's budget that I'd like to discuss with you, because I asked for this last year, and I wanted to update you, and it's the seventeen thousand dollars that says for part-time. That was in our budget for last year, and it was for imaging. And even though it says no part-time here for the last six years, that specifically what it was for was for the imaging. We had wanted to get all that information online so that it could be easiest, easily accessible.
I thought we approved it.
You did approve it, and now I'm gonna update you on it, okay?
Okay.
So what happened is Kathy and I, they have a unit with, with the state of Michigan, that's specifically, we'll guide you through this, but it's a massive endeavor, and it's very expensive. Okay, so then we thought we, we would do something in, in, in-house, okay? We could go ahead and we could, you know, do all the backup, do all the claims, do the agendas, do the minutes, do the minutes from nineteen sixty even, because we have them there, we can scan them, PDF them and put them up. But we ran into hardware and software roadblocks. We don't have, when all the computers were replaced in the city, they didn't replace our part-time computer. So we didn't have anywhere that a part-timer could do it. Then Adobe, we got, finally got Adobe, but it was only, it was, we couldn't even put it on that, that computer. So Dana and George have been going, because we have to make sure there's no confidential information on there either. They've been going through every single sheet of paper of backup and claims to make sure, 'cause it always wasn't gone over as fine-toothed as our staff does. Okay, George is working since two thousand, she's working on two thousand eleven up, and Dana's working on, and we don't have to worry about the stuff she does, because we know that she does it right, but anything before that, well, anything before me, how about that? So anyway, we're there, as soon as we get, and I feel comfortable that there's no information that shouldn't be out there, then we'll start posting. So that's where we're at with the imaging. I asked for it in this budget, and somehow it got admitted, so it's up to you guys whether or not you wanna put it back in, okay? But I wanted to update you on that, I had talked to Mariana about that.
You said it got omitted?
Yeah, I had asked for seventeen thousand to be put in this budget as well, going forward.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so the part-time staff that they're looking for to do this project is in the elections?
No, it's not.
Yes, it is, that's, that's the intent, that's what was, that's what was discussed.
Okay, so are you saying the person that needs to do the job is still there?
Yes, but it's coming out of a different department.
The money you're saying is still budgeted, but it's budgeted in elections?
Yes.
Can we go to elections?
We're coming up to it next.
And that's where I have a big issue with. Because it's always been, it's always been in the clerk, or it was in the clerk's. About the imaging or the elections.
Yes, this is a big issue everywhere, so, for example, the Wayne County Probate Court, everything is now electronic filing, we could look at everything online. All of a sudden, the probate court said, we don't have the personnel to go through and make sure there are no security numbers, there are no, there's no confidential information.
And that's exactly what we're doing.
So all of a sudden now, nothing is available online. Same thing to a certain extent with the family court, there's, there's nothing available. So that is a big challenge, and going forward, that's the only way to do it, is scan it in and to have it available.
And it's a clerk's function, clerk's office function.
Why would it be in elections and not be in?
What, what ends up happening here is you appropriate seventeen thousand dollars that, that sits there, and it can be used elsewhere, that provides city service, whether it's recreation or police and fire, or it's somewhere, building or ordinance. So what is happening is you're tying up seventeen thousand dollars worth of appropriation, this has been appropriated for six years. Hasn't, we haven't spent, over the last six years, you haven't spent any part-time.
This was the first time.
Out of this department, you have not spent the seventeen thousand.
I mean, my question is, why, why is it shown in elections?
Because what ends up happening here is, if you do the program, if you do the program, then that's where the, the money is set up for. If you don't do the program, then you've been able to utilize that resource somewhere else where it's needed.
I, I follow it, I, I followed that line of reasoning, if I don't use it for five years in this department, I can use it elsewhere in that five years. And as a council, we can just say, okay, we know that they're gonna use that power this year, let's just move it here, once we go through the other portion.
Right, if, if, if it's council's pleasure to put the seventeen thousand back in, then that's council's pleasure.
We can ask to a budget amendment.
That's true too, that's right.
Maybe I'm understanding this incorrectly, what I'm understanding you saying, or what I'm hearing you say is, that seventeen thousand is still available for the clerk's office to be used. It's just coming from a different department.
Correct.
So if I'm on the clerk's side, it wouldn't make a difference to me where it's coming from, anyway, I'm gonna have access.
That's correct.
But that seventeen thousand would be used elsewhere outside that office.
That's where it is, well, right now, the seventeen isn't there, and it's somewhere else.
And whose discretion can you spend the seventeen thousand in?
Well, what we did is, remember, we're looking at the whole, the whole pot, so we allocated that seventeen thousand, it went and.
No, 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 what I'm saying, if it's in elections.
Yes, sir.
If it's in elections, the clerk's, look, I'm all for this scanning stuff, this is extremely important, 'cause otherwise, if, if, if not, you gotta go down to the basement and see what's down there, and you'll see why. So I recall as a council, we approved this way back when.
Last year was the first year.
Right, so because it's approved now, is this seventeen thousand available to the clerk's office no matter what, or is the administration's discretion?
No, no, the seventeen thousand, she, our recommendation right now is that if the clerk wanted to spend the seventeen thousand, we're saying you can spend that her discretion, but it's coming out of the elections department.
So on that end, what difference would it make on the clerk's end, where it's coming out of?
Well, let's go to that, we just, real quick.
And, and that's where it's gonna, there's a lot in elections that I need to discuss with you. No, actually, they, no.
No, 'cause you're not, you're only going to elections.
Well, we'll get to the elections.
Why don't we go to, okay.
Okay, any other questions here, we'll reserve, we'll put a pin in it, and we'll come back.
So, one quick second, so on this one, Dana, if you could add this one as a possibility, and then what we can do later, towards the end of all these budgets, we're gonna go back, and I'm gonna look at what Dana's got, and between me and the council members, we can decide if those particular issues have been resolved, or they, we need to go back and reserve things, go ahead.
Okay, all right, let's turn the page, if there's no other questions, then let's move on to page.
Thirty.
I'm sorry, thirty, page thirty. Page thirty, my eyes are starting to jump. Okay, so what you have here is this. So you have the clerk's, this is the elections department, we're budgeting for two elections, not three, two. You have part-time staff for the two elections, you have the, you have overtime set up, you have. You have part-time staff for the two elections, you have overtime set up, you have the fringe benefits, which is employer social security, we've set up materials and supplies, the contractual services, which is election setup, machine testing, cellular modem services, we've set up $40,500, which is a purchase of computers, $27,1500, which is 100% funded through a grant. The total dollar value for the elections budget would be $216,245. Questions?
Yeah, I got a question. I don't see the $17,000.
No, it's going to come out of the 98. The other seven, at the end of the day, we're saying you got to come out of what you have, which is out of the 98,000. We're not going to increase that, because basically, if she doesn't spend it, then we've sat on 17 grand that could have been allocated elsewhere.
Can.
Okay, but so you're saying the 17,000 is part of the 98?
That's correct, yes.
At the same time, previous to that, in the year 2021, '22 projected it was 95. So if it was 95, and that 17,000 was not a part of that, it was a part of the clerk's office at one point, and now you're switching it to elections, then based on that theory, the 95,708, which is a projected activity of 2021, '22, should be up by 17,000?
Not necessarily. So I'm looking at it going, you got to manage your department. Do you really need all that part-time help? Okay, I, based upon what I've seen and what I've heard through the budget sessions, okay, there are a lot of groups, there's a lot going on, I think the clerk has pointed that out, there's a lot happening here, and at the end of the day, we're asking the clerk to manage her part-time staff, including the program, for $98,000.
That's including elections?
That is correct.
That is elections.
That's, yes, I have, I have worked in election. Now, again, it goes back to when is the work going to get done? It may or may not get done. It may or may not happen.
I know, but without, okay, so if you take then the 98,000 and you subtract 17,000, so now you're a, I'm fasting, I'm getting a little slow here.
Yep, that's right.
Eighty-one thousand.
Yes.
Okay, you're at eighty-one thousand.
Right.
So let's presume they use this 17,000 for what they need to use it for, for what I've considered, because I voted yes on it, as I recall, so I can sort of sum it up. So now you have eighty-one thousand, so if in all previous years, the part-time salaries were in 2021, 152, and 21, '22 projected 95, and now we're going to 81, to me, just logically, it doesn't seem like it could be able to happen.
Okay, we're asking the clerk to manage her part-time staff.
Council Chair.
But earlier you said it was moving from the clerk's to elections.
Yes.
But based on what I'm counting, it's not.
Well, again, we're allocating that 17,000 elsewhere, it's gone, okay? So, well, it's been split up, and I can't pinpoint exactly where.
But since council allocated 17,000, I don't think that should have been anybody's thing to take it away.
Well, at the end of the day too, as Mariana has pointed out, she could spend that 17,000 before June 30th. Okay, and the project could be done. And we're carrying it over into the next fiscal year. So at the end of the day, that could happen.
That's a 60-day period with a four-day work.
It's been budgeted since July the 1st.
And we don't have the equipment to do it.
And.
And we don't have the equipment to do it.
And I can't answer that.
Or do we have IT to do that?
Go ahead, you want to speak?
We do have money in our IT department, so I've asked you to provide an invoice to purchase those equipments.
And I've been waiting on Turk.
Okay, so that's okay, you can ask me to pressure him to get that done faster.
What do you need from us?
I need a new computer and I need Adobe.
Can you just bring it forward and we can see if we can approve?
Once I get a quote.
I've been in your office a million times, and I don't see anybody even lagging one second in there.
I know, I know.
I have a laptop in my office as well that's available if you want to take it tomorrow.
It's just, you know, it's amazing that the work you guys get done with the little time that you have. And I'm really concerned about this, you know, $17,000 doesn't seem like a lot of money, the $7 billion. But $17,000 to me, for them, is everything in the world.
Well, like I said, the appropriation is there right now, the equipment is available, I mean.
I would like to suggest then that we move it back out of election and back to the clerk's office. Everything I'm hearing, to me, I still think it should be in the clerk's office based on that, the total theory. So with your permission, I'd like to move it back to, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, but how does the rest of the council?
I agree, I agree.
Okay, so you want to increase the line and back 17, you want to give them back to 17?
Give it back to the clerk, but I just want to make sure.
We can do that.
So are you in agreement?
No. So you're asking us to come out of unbalanced, or you want to make a cut somewhere?
Well, in this case, you had mentioned that in elections, well, no, we can't make it all out of elections, so now we're going to be shorted on that.
No, and I do need to go over the election budget with you yet, okay?
So we'll table that for a second. Are we ready to go with the elections?
We've, like I stated earlier, I've given the description, if council has questions, now's the time to ask.
I have more explanation, okay. So I think one time, Council Chair, when you were, we were down at the Southwest meeting and I was explaining the different elections, and so you know, we have, our elections go every four years, okay? You have your presidential, you have your local, you have your gubernatorial, and you have your local, okay? Your local was last year. It's going to be much less expensive than your presidential and, you're shaking your head, and your gubernatorial. We have a gubernatorial year, okay? So when I requested this budget, I requested 150,000 for part-time, because I'm associating that with the presidential. So you can look at the first line item, and in 2020, 2020, 2021, we had two elections, and we did 152. So gubernatorial is going to be pretty much the same as presidential. The two elections, it's going to be just as busy. Our absentee ballots, that's where you get a lot more part-time too, is your absentee. We've grown from 6,000 to 16,000 as far as the number of ballots that we have sent out during the presidential. So I requested 150. They came back with 98. I don't know how we're going to do an election with $98,000 and a gubernatorial. Last year, we had a local, our back room did. One of the reasons why that it's less expensive under contracted services is because our own staff did the test act, everything has to be tested, y'all can come in and see anything you want, it's so detailed. You have to run the machine, you have to have all the machines tested. It's, none of this money is just being thrown out the window. They, I think you know, it's, every single part of it is tested and tested again, and it's very important. So anyway, I requested 150,000 for it.
On elections?
On election for part-time.
Do you want an additional 17 for the clerks?
17, I want back in the clerk's where it was. Okay, 950, Kathy and I talked about it, and we thought 130 would be able to do it. We are down, down, you know, we don't have as much staff. Kathy's coming back, like I said, and she's going to be working substantially less than, and she's going to help in the back in addition to training a new person.
And that's also poll workers.
And that's all the. That's not what I requested, I requested 150.
If I may, we had extensive discussions about the part-time salary. And when we came out of the meeting, my understanding was that it was 98,000, we were in agreement because there were only two elections. That's my understanding.
And that's two elections on the 152 also, which was a presidential year, which is very similar.
I'm just going to throw it out there right now, I'm going to allow everybody to finish speaking, but this is probably an item that we should put on the table part with Dana to come back maybe during the reserve.
Sure.
This way, if you don't mind, Madam Clerk, between you and your department, and Chief of Staff, and rest of the administration, come up with something workable for all parties. If not, then on the reserve, we'll readdress it.
Sure.
Just because we, just because we put something on the reserve doesn't necessarily mean we're going to go to the reserve, because you guys may all get together, work it out, and you let us know if all worked out, here's the numbers, and it's just a matter of voting for it at the end of the budget. Yes, go ahead.
Elections is the most fundamental right that we have in this country.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I can't find 17 grand somewhere in this budget, shame on us, shame on everybody.
Well, in this case, more than 17 grand.
Okay, so even if we, at $67,000, if we can't find $67,000 for the most fundamental right that a citizen can have, then shame on all of us.
I do have one more line item, okay? I'm sorry, just one more. Under contractual services, where in 101, 198, 18, the line item is for 42,500, I had requested 55,000. Okay.
What was that in the West?
It was, what was it in the West?
Well, we spent 34,1 in 2021, and we're projecting for this year 32,2.
And I explained in the budget hearings, the increase that we are taking over, I compared it to 2020 as well, okay? I have a sheet here where I complain, it's a $3,200 increase from 2020. Had you used the same, you know, things. We are taking over, it's an increase this year because five years ago, all the equipment was purchased through the state, through, and Wayne County handled the maintenance fees on the equipment for five years. We have it now this year, and that is almost 19,000. Okay, the other big addition, I think that was about it, that's the biggest one, there was a $20,000 or $19,000 increase there. So I do have this all laid out, what the difference was between 2020 and this year.
My suggestion is you go back to the administration and work with them, because we're talking some.
Absolutely, absolutely, but that's what I requested, and that's not what I got.
But it also makes sense what you're saying, Madam Clerk, in the, yes, during different elections, I mean, I go to every elections, I'm involved with every election, and definitely, obviously, needless to say, but he knows it, but you know, if it's a presidential election.
You've seen it, it was download, yeah.
I even got to a break and worked for free.
I know you did.
So we want to make sure that you guys have a fair, and the key word is fair amount, obviously, we don't want to give more than you need.
Oh, absolutely.
But a fair amount of money to make sure that the taxpayers and the residents have equal opportunity to be able to vote, and I don't want, and not that that's what the administration is doing, I know that's not the case, but I'm just throwing it out there, I don't want any type of voter suppression either, so I want to make sure that voters have access to what they need to have access for. So I don't know if other council members are in agreement, and I will allow you to comment for sure. I just want to make sure, I'm going to allow the comment for the councilman, and I'm going to go ahead and table that until the reserve date, but go ahead.
Say, for instance, okay, we keep everything the way it is right now.
Yes, sir.
And election time comes, and all of a sudden, we're short $30,000.
Correct.
We make a budget then.
Yes, sir.
And it's got to come from somewhere.
That's correct.
So then we have to find where it comes from.
That's correct.
So whose job is that to find out?
We would make a recommendation to the councils that they would consider. There would be multiple recommendations, but yes, you would be asking another department to pay.
I mean, because elections is something we can't just say, oh, no.
Now, this is, this is a classic, guys, and Councilwoman, sorry about that. Look, we're overspending by, you're bringing in $2.1 million in new money. You're getting the classic discussion, right now, this is it, where does it stop, where does it start? Now, we're here recommending, we thought we had an agreement with the clerk, we don't, obviously, we will work with the clerk to see where we can end up. But this is it, this is, this is our dilemma, this is the council's dilemma here. The expenses keep coming, keep coming, keep coming, and the funding isn't there, isn't there, like I said, two years ago was $2 million, this upcoming year it's 2.1. Okay.
It's a small amount of money, and it's a new function that has to be done because of the privacy rules and everything being online.
Fair enough.
It helps keep the public informed, but we're talking, I don't know what 17,000 is out of an over $15 million budget.
Well, that was not the elections, that's separate from it.
That's, that's right, that's right. And remember this too, so there's, this is an unfunded mandate, okay, that you have here for this additional dollars that we're discussing.
For what?
Grants to help pay to.
We got to grant 40,000 for the new laptops for elections.
But not for the other expenses? You would think, Council, obviously, there we go.
Well, one of the proposals that we had early on, and I spoke with the administration, we're going to be working on a, what do you call it, grants manager to come in, and I spoke with the mayor multiple times about this, and he's mentioned that there's a lot of grants that are still out there. We've had some grants that have come in, and we still haven't used, as much as he and the administration would like, and there's a lot of grants out there that we are not having access to. And there's some sister or close cities nearby that have a grant manager in place, and they're bringing in quite a bit of money, because I've asked a couple of different council members, are you guys getting all the money for this? And they mentioned it was from the grant manager, we're getting non-stop grants, but we also have a lot of grants. Some were, had the administration not jumped out with the law, what was it, 1.6, was it? The one for the demolitions? Remember, remember the one where? Finally got back to grants?
Yep, yep, yep.
Yeah, but I'm just mentioning, that's where a grant manager would more than pay for his or herself, and so we are going in that direction, hopefully fully focused on that.
Council Chair, for the imaging, I know we're talking about the imaging, I did put that in on the initial request, and that didn't go through, and I just sent the request again to Ali Deen. For, I don't know how much it will be or anything, but I put, I did put that down for consideration for a grant.
Okay.
So Mr. Chair, if I may, so we would, so my recommendation would be that we put this as, the 17,000 and this other piece as budget issues.
Correct.
Okay, and then in the meantime, later on this week, we'll get together with the clerk.
Correct.
We'll lock our, we'll get into a room and we'll see what we can hammer off.
Exactly. So as I mentioned earlier when we first started, any type of budget issue, just because it's an issue, doesn't necessarily mean we're going to get to it in reserve, because it may get eventually, like in this case, worked out.
Right.
And we're all good.
Or you may find, as we progress through other budgets, you may find.
Cut money somewhere else.
That's correct, and then boom, there you go, Council, there you go. All right, very good. With that, Mr. Chair, that concludes the presentation for this evening.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
When you got this set up, Mr. Spoh, great job. This is so much clearer than Dave.
Good.
It was last year, the year before, and six, seven years ago for me.
Good, good, good.
Now I can understand what's going on.
Good, good, and you can ask good questions, and you get a good feel for where we're going?
No, before we end, before we end, well, first of all, I do want to commend you, and I told you this when I sat down, me, you, and Mariana on Monday. You've got some serious skill set in.
Oh, thank you.
And we hope to keep that skill set here, not only in the way you're putting things together, but in your presentation also.
Thank you.
Very good skill set, and also good in sales, you would scare me if you got into my business. But on another note, I want to make sure if anybody in the audience or on Zoom has, wait, I hope we didn't turn off Zoom. Did Zoom off? No, we got to get back on, because we got to give people an opportunity to be able to ask questions, just in case. We promised them that. Okay, so anybody in the audience have any questions? Okay, anybody in the audience?
Anything else?
Vince, come on up.
Okay, good.
Skinner?
No, take them home with you. Yes, 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 take those home with you. Great, I'm glad you're happy with the format, anything, again, if you need any other information, let us know, we'll get it to you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your time tonight, greatly appreciate it.
We're going to get those couple pages.
Yes, yeah, I will get you the, the updated on the, yeah, I did that at four fifteen, I went through the presentation.
All right.
I'm sorry, hi, I do have one more question, and that's to clarify with Moe Badun, so I looked at last year's budget, we've only presented the, the current salaries and the upcoming salaries, we've never presented the past ones. If you want to see the past ones, you can look at last year's budget, is that okay? Okay.
There you go.
Okay, so, uh, one second, just make sure from Angela.
Give us a second. Angela? We're, we're trying to get the backup now, uh...
Excuse me, young man, don't steal my budget now.
Oh, no.
I got to have that for next meeting. There you go.
Is that the presidential phone? Is that the presidential phone now?
Everybody has to log on when I, Council Chair. Everybody needs to log back on.
Who's there?
Everybody needs to log back on when she starts them.
Forgot my question.
Okay, would you be able, would you be able at least to record Vince, what he's saying? Okay, okay, including, it'll be for the recording later, right, he'll be on there. Okay, so Vince, okay, so we're going to go ahead and continue with that part while we're trying to get the Zoom on. Go ahead. Yeah, tell him to ask a question. So Vince is being recorded right now, right? All right, Vince, you're on, go ahead.
I...
You've got two minutes, Vince, to ask any questions.
Probably don't have any question or anything like that, but I just wanted to compliment how this was presented. This has been a lot better than what we've had in the past.
I agree.
So hats off to you guys for doing this.
Vince, he wants you to speak up a little bit, if you don't mind.
I just want to compliment everybody on how this was presented today. It, uh, it's a lot better than what I've seen in the past, and a little more understandable. We're getting questions answered instead of blowing off.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good, thank you, thank you, Vince. Anybody else in the audience?
Um, Mike Blackburn, Arnold Street, um, question is, um, the information that Councilman Badun asked about the individual salaries, would that be made available to the public also?
Anything that will be given to us will be public. Is that correct? Yeah.
All right, will it be on the city's website, or do we have to request it? Okay, great, thank you.
Hello again. I just have a thank you, because it was great. I love the screens, it makes it so much easier for everybody, I think, I really appreciate that. And I would love kind of echoing if all the handouts and things could be put on the website, on the, like a budget page or something, I know a lot of people would really appreciate that. I did have one question, on the mayor's office one, there was a line item that said comm active, C-O-M-M active, I can't remember what line it was, I had written it down earlier, and I just wasn't sure what that stood for, like what that meant. I Googled, and it was something like communications, but I wasn't sure if that was...
Community activities.
Oh, community activities, okay, yeah, I was like, I didn't think it was communications. Okay, so what would that include?
Any event that the mayor's office puts up for the entire public.
Are, so that, that's three thousand, so that would be, like, what kind of activities?
Printouts.
Do. I'm just trying to think, because I know a lot of them are parks and rec.
No, so if the mayor were to have an event of his own, let's say a water distribution event where we have to print out things, um, that type of expense.
So there's nothing planned, it's just budgeted?
Yes.
Okay, got it, thank you. And then regarding the election stuff, as somebody who's worked the absentee voter board, please look at that very carefully, because, like, the presidential election, I'm pretty sure we were there till three in the morning, four in the morning, it was ridiculous, and even if those of us who are just there for election day don't get paid overtime, if other employees have to stay, we're going to start eating into overtime, I, I don't know, that's just, that's a big one, and, and like Ray said, like Councilman Musket said, we can't say no to elections, that's not something we can cut. So I just really hope that you guys listen to the clerk and her expertise on this. So that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Okay, Kim, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, um, I had gotten information that I, my budget was supposed to be looked at, uh, between number seven and number nine on the clerks.
Which one is it? Oh, we missed it. Oh, we missed it.
I've been sitting here.
Kim! All right, let's, let's get into it right now, I, I am very sorry. Oh my gosh, yes, I just, I, I...
Any questions on this?
Page thirty-five. Yeah, we don't want to reschedule you. It would be page thirty, I'm sorry, thirty, thirty, thirty-five, is it? No, 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 thirty-eight? Thirty-eight, page thirty-eight, I'm sorry, page thirty-eight. Okay, are, are you all there?
Yes.
And I'm very sorry. What you have here is, you have the, uh, current contract for the, for the assessor. We are also requesting that a new staff field appraiser be added to the contract, along with requested training, uh, in the assessor's, uh, department here, as you know, she's a contractual, this is a whole contractual team, uh, we're asking to appropriate three-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-zero-ninety-six. Uh, the additional field staff, uh, appraiser is because of all the work that is going on here in, in the city. The construction is phenomenal, fantastic. I, I, I will now turn it over to, to the council for questions.
Well, I, I'll, I'll make a comment, um, the assessor's office was one of the, was one of the most volatile, um, departments that we had in our city for a long time. And I remember when I first got on council about eight years ago, I mean, it seemed like we were having a different assessor every other week. And, uh, now with, uh, contractual services that we have offered to Tony Fawco and Kimberly Comer, I think they've done absolutely a great job. Next, so thank you, for the continued good work. Uh, I hear nothing but compliments about the assessor's office. But the new field appraiser that was never needed in the past, what's the primary purpose you need it right now? Now, you know, there's some construction going on, of course, in the city, especially the commercial, but give me more details on this, please.
So the state recommends that we visit about twenty percent of each type of property in the city every year, and, you know, we've got over, uh, twenty-one thousand residential homes, so just the amount of construction that's happening within, you know, people updating their houses, a lot of our homes were built in the fifties, sixties, seventies, and all these new owners, I mean, the market's booming, so we've got tons of sales, and all these new owners are coming in, and they're remodeling, they're changing up the situation that they're presently in, you know, they're adding garages, they're adding additions, they're demoing entire houses and building new ones. So we're just seeing a big boom in construction, and, um, just having another person out in the field, um, would be able to move somebody over to be doing more work within the office, so...
But why would that...
There's just a lot to process.
Yeah, but why would that not come out of contractual services, which is a contract that we have with you, the total contract, because I always...
It is part, it's a part of the contractual services, it's just saying we want to increase the contract, and we're giving you a reason why we're increasing the contract, because there's more work.
Okay, so that, that's exactly what I'm saying, so the contractual, the current contract with your company is two-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-six. And what I'm asking is, from that particular amount, because when we originally hired your company, they've done a great job, so I'm, I'm making that clear, um, included any and every type of employee you may need, um, expenses, uh, supplies, et cetera, et cetera. And what I'm asking now is, you're asking us to go from two-ninety-four to three-hundred-and-thirty with six thousand be, uh, being towards training, which is, I recall at the beginning, and I might be wrong from the original contract, training was also a part of your total contract, is that correct? And I, you might know better than me.
Right, the, the laws have changed in the past two years, our staff that is in office prior was never required to hold certifications and to have con ed. That is something that is new for this upcoming year. So the employees that we have provided as full-time staff in the offices now have a different level of certification they're required to hold and/or to meet an educational obligation through the state. So to meet those new requirements that are state law, we would need, and we're looking for an increase to be able to afford those changes.
Okay, Councilman, go ahead. The extra appraiser, the new position, I believe, will pay for itself in the long run, being able to go out and survey more property per year, and, uh, I, I believe there's a lot of tax dollars out there that are not being counted, a lot of tax dollars. And I think we all have seen that, with people not pulling permits, adding additions on their homes, uh, converting garages into heated living spaces, that's money that the city's losing in tax dollars. Here, we're looking for seventeen thousand dollars, we probably can get that out of two homes, three homes, okay? So I believe that one person makes a big difference, big difference, okay? I had a next-door neighbor, my next-door neighbor tells me I got to be the only crazy guy in the world that pulls a permit to nail a two-by-four onto my deck, okay? But that's what needs to be done, everybody needs to do what they're supposed to do. And, uh, shame on us if we don't go out and collect this money. Okay, it's just like when we have renters, that the homes aren't being, uh, uh, shown as a rental property, the school district loses money, because they're being homesteaded when they're not supposed to be, and that money gets lost to the, to the school district. So I, I believe this will work out in both ways for school district and the city.
So thank you, Kim.
Any other questions on page thirty-eight? Okay, now, Mr. Chair, that concludes our presentation for this evening.